Good morning, and we are ready to start. I am inclined to order the State Board of Education meeting of May 7th. Please rise. Let's introduce.
The Institute of the United States of America. Educated through the Great Government, what it stands for. We're God. In the principle of the Lord's sake, justice.
To start, as we always do with public participation, I'd like to remind you when you come up to the table, please state your name and address. We have quite an extensive list of places. It's to the three-minute limit. If you can't, it's competitive. That you also can do the side with the whole problem. We're going to start with Steve Tracy and then Representative DePere, I'm sorry, DeLoris.
Open the page.
It's on already. Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Commissioner, good morning. My name is Steve Tracy. I live at 203 Ivy Mountain Road in Ocean, Connecticut. And I'm here today as the Chair of the Finding Team of the Danbury Charter School. We're in support of the petition pending before you in the Capital Prep Middletown Charter School. We believe that the Middletown petition has barracked. That its failure to fund that school is inconsistent with provisions of Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-66, E.D. and E.E.D. We believe that Middletown would be funded this year. In addition, we believe that the circumstances of the Danbury Charter School are similar to those of Middletown, and that we therefore have a material interest in the outcome of this matter. And thus, we have filed our own petition, and it has to be considered as well. As you may know, the State Board of Education authorized an initial certificate of approval of approval for the Danbury Charter School to fall's of 2018. Our education received the highest marks of any charter applicant during that cycle. But regrettably, we, and more importantly, the many families who were eager to enroll their children in their school, had to stand by for six and now going on seven years unfunded. And while that has gone on, we've seen other applicants come forward and be approved for funding and as well. This despite our having an outstanding curriculum, the International Baccalaureate Program, the solid Connecticut-based management partner in Elevate Charter Schools, and the facility put, earned, and ready to go in a community that complains regularly about overcrowding in school. So we have two requests. First, that you consider and look favorably on the petition as filed by the Capital Prep Middletown Charter School by applying the provisions of the statute to the specified circumstances, allowing for further proceedings in the matter and issuing a declaratory ruling later, or initiating regulation-making procedures to clarify and promptly applying the statute. And second, that you accept Danbury's petition to be considered standing with the party in this matter. We believe the progress of the actions of the state charter law could result in the funding of both of these schools this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is State Representative Anne Dofanay. I live at 204 Gray Road in Danville, Connecticut, and I represent the 44th District. And I am in my ninth year as a legislator. I do serve on the Education Committee, and I want to speak on behalf of the process in which you allocate funds for charter schools. There is a very clear process, and the first part of it is that the General Assembly would decide the appropriations for charter schools. And we did that during the budget. The part that I'm here to speak about is specifically the Board of Ed, Education here, their responsibility as part of step two with that. There's very, very clear written statute about what your job is, State Board of Ed. And if I may, I may just remind you of how you are supposed to pick and choose from the, those schools selected, which one gets the appropriated funds. It says here, "The provisions of this section, the State Board of Education, shall determine which school is funded first based on a consideration of the following factors in order of importance as follows: the quality of the proposed program as measured against the criteria required in the charter school application process pursuant to Section 1066B; whether the applicant has demonstrated a record of academic success by students; whether the school is located in a school district with a demonstrated need for student improvement; and whether the applicant has plans concerning the preparedness of facilities, staffing, and outreach to students." I believe there was a misappropriation or a selection of the charter school that was to be funded for this program, for this allocation of money. And I think that I'm asking, I'm here today to ask you to correct that and to do your job as the State Board of Ed. Right now, there's a possibility of a very large lawsuit to the state. And I, speaking on the behalf of my constituents and state constituents, we know that lawsuits are extremely costly. And I think it would be unfair to ask the taxpayers to pay for a lawsuit in which, oh, you failed to do your job and look at this appropriately. You look at the choices here, the Capital Prep Middletown school met all the criteria and was selected to be the best choice. And I believe that that is the decision that you need to retract and make the allocation of money to. As I understand, the money is still there, and it's still possible to rectify this, and that's my request to you. The General Assembly did their job, and now we need you to do yours. And we need you to do and follow the law. Thank you.
Your name, Rojas? Followed by Michelle, right? Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Honorable Members of the State Board of Education and Commissioner. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak my remarks today. My name is Arian Rojas. I reside at 30 Chestnut in Hilton. And I'm the Director of External Relations and Special Projects at Elevate Charter Schools. The mission of Elevate Charter Schools is to develop and operate high-performance charter schools. As such, we stand here today to support the petition as set forth by the Capital Prep Central School position. In my role, I lead our key founding community initiatives, engage in response directly to families about the high-quality educational resources and opportunities that elevate schools, as well as inform and educate local organizations about elevator schools, including scheduling, giving presentations with community-based organizations. With that being said, Elevate Charter School is the name operator of the Danbury Charter School that received an initial certificate of approval in 2018, but today remains unfunded. Year over year, Danbury residents have persevered with the support of the Danbury Charter School by pouring themselves into testimonials, petitions, email and letter writing, social media campaigns, and other demonstrations. The Danbury community has risen to the challenge for almost seven consecutive years to prove they continue to want and need this school for their own children, for their families, for their loved ones, and for the greater future of their city. During our various informational seminars, open houses, guided tours, advocacy outreach activities, community workshops, tabling, and volunteering, the connection to the Danbury Charter School remains palpable even with crushing disappointment that everything has been done, it's still not good enough or not yet enough. Even with the constant hope and dreams driving Danbury families that advocate for this school choice option, our supporters are heartbroken that Sanford, Sanford, Bridgeport, and New Haven have had charter school for years, while Danbury's first charter school is still an afterthought. Additionally, schools that have been approved after us, while Danbury's first charter school has not received funding, Danbury forces have gone unheard and their demands go sideswept. What do we continue to tell our community, the many dozens of heroic and relentless champions, incredibly hardworking and passionate families, and eagerly awaiting students? The community has actively supported their wishes for a global school choice at the Danbury Charter School. However, they patiently witness injustice that their fight does not matter or is not good enough because other districts are perceived to be first in the order. Our CEO, John Taylor, founded Elevate Charter Schools because of his continued passion and drive to improve the lives of all children. All children deserve equal access regardless of their guardians, tools for them to attend a public charter school or traditional district public school, regardless of zip code or district line. I urge your support and favor of funding the Danbury Charter School. After all these years, it stands with us in our mission to provide every child with the opportunity they deserve in Danbury, as well as in Middletown and beyond in the state. Thank you for always going above and beyond to serve Connecticut's students and families.
Good morning. I'm Michelle Clay from Middletown, Connecticut. You do my address? Middletown, Wisconsin. To now stand before you, well, sit before you and address a powerful and transformative movement, one that seeks to ensure that every child, regardless of their background, has access to quality education. This movement is particularly vital for our Black and Brown communities who have historically faced systemic barriers in the pursuit of their educational equities. Education is not just a pathway to personal success. It is a fundamental right and a cornerstone of a just society. Yet far too long, we have witnessed disparities that have marginalized our Black and Brown students, lending them opportunities and potentials. The right for equity in education is not merely a battle for better schools. It is a fight for dignity, representation, and justice. For far too long, I was told by my dad I had to work 10 times harder and have to take, I'm sorry, have to take my education seriously in order to compete in anything and everything in this world. At this point, I'm tired of competing, and I'm tired of fighting. The Capital Prep Middletown did everything right. We followed all the rules. You all can't keep telling us this about our kids and then snatch away our hopes and dreams from our children's futures. We have the potential to open Capital Prep in Middletown, and it is a significant step moving forward. This institution embodies our commitment to providing our students with a high-quality education that equips them with the skills, knowledge, and confidence to thrive in an ever-changing world. Capital Prep is not just a school. It is a beacon of hope, a testament to what we can achieve when we come together to challenge the status quo. At Capital Prep, we are dedicated to nurturing their minds of the students and fostering an environment where we can express, where they can express themselves freely and authentically. We recognize the importance of culturally relevant pediology with honors and rich histories and contributions of Black individuals and communities. Our curriculum is designed to inspire critical thinking and empower our students to become advocates for change, not only in their own lives, but in the world all around them. This school recognizes more than just bricks and mortar. It symbolizes resilience, determination, and an unwavering belief that our children deserve the best. It is a reflection of our hard work put in by educators, parents, and community leaders who have fought tirelessly for the opportunity. Together, we are breaking down the barriers that have hindered our students for far too long. I know what it's like to have a district failure student, in my case, my child. I will brag on my son every chance I get. I was a parent who was able to choose for my son with the guidance of Dr. Perry, my pastor, presiding elder in my village behind me. My choice was the best decision I ever made. Now my son is going into his senior year at an HBCU, Livingston College, who is also on their football team. And, A.C. Why am I here? I fight for the working parents who can't be here at 9:30 a.m. to speak and fight for their children. Because let's all face it, if it was really about the kids, we wouldn't leave the most important people out of this conversation. My dad passed away six months ago, and I felt like the best parts of me died with him. He always spoke about legacy. I used to say, "I don't care what anybody say about me." But then he would turn around and say, "But you should care about what people say when you die." I leave you all with this. What would your legacy be? When you had the chance to be on the right side of history, what side did you choose? Let's all stand united in our mission to create a brighter future for our children. Let us empower them to dream big, to pursue their passions, and to challenge the injustices they encounter. Together, we can build a legacy of excellence and equity in education that will resonate from generations to come. Thank you.
Dr. Steve Perry, followed by John, I think it says Tatski.
Good morning, beautiful people.
Well.
It'd be early Mother's Day to the mothers in the building, the grandmothers and the like. I am Dr. Steve Perry. Stevie to the peoples of Middletown, where I was born and raised. I live at 782 Ocean Avenue in West Haven, Connecticut. Mother's Day makes me think about my grandmother. She grew up in North Carolina, Picking Pot. She's always tell us, "It's your education because they can't take that from you." "Can't take that from you," she'd say. And she would say it at a time when I was about 10 years old, working with my grandfather to help him to learn. About my age. About 55 years old. Now, she picked a bad person to teach him to read, considering I had already been expelled from 3K and been detained in the third grade. Yeah, that can really happen. It's okay to laugh if he's like, "It's true, me out too." Apparently can't cuss when you're a little kid. But while I was working with him on reading, we would use word books. And sometimes he would say, "Let's do the hard stuff." He would like us to. They'd read the newspaper. So if today I were to have my grandfather with me, I might make him take a look at the statue where it says, "The Board of Education shall select the school who will be funded first." My grandmother was making the argument that they can't take it from you, but she knew that they could deny it. My grandfather was born in 1918 in rural North Carolina. See, in rural North Carolina in 1918, they could take it from you. But it makes no sense that they can take it from us in Connecticut in 2025. The law is the law. It's as simple as it can be. It says that the General Assembly provides money, and then just like every other RFP, you fund based upon the score. It's simple. That that hasn't happened, that it continues not to happen, that there are people who wish to break the law is evidence of how they can take it from you. So the question that we all have today is, who are we? They or us? Are we the us who one day made our grandparents proud? See, my grandmother used to say, "You're gonna be a doctor one day." She didn't know I was real queasy with the blood thing, so she meant something different. She said, "You're gonna be a professor." And that's true. I have been a professor and a founder of some pretty successful schools. The number one high school in the state of Connecticut for sending children to college, despite the fact that there are 92% of children in that school are African-American or Latin. Almost 70% poor.
Dr. Perry, can you just get off?
I can. I can. And so we're here today for a very simple purpose, to ask you, are you they? Are you us? Will you follow the law or will you continue down the road with the truth and service? Yeah. Happy Mother's Day. Really glad to see you all.
This is John, and I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, Tatski. John?
John Taylor?
Good name. Starts with a T. That I can't read.
Good morning, everybody. Madam Chair, members of the board, Commissioner. My name is John Taylor. I'm the CEO of Elevate Charter School, the charter management organization for Danbury Charter Schools. Elevate and Danbury Charter Schools stand in solidarity with Capital Prepory Schools as they seek clarity and fairness regarding charter school funding in Connecticut. Capital Prep and DCS each received the highest score in the charter request proposals for the years in which they were approved by the State Board of Ed, Middletown in 2023, and Danbury in 2018. Unfortunately, we too were passed over for funding, even us eager for answers to the important questions raised in Capital Prep's petition. We are grateful for Capital Prep's commitment to addressing these critical issues and to pave the way for equitable funding, approval for all charter schools. It is essential that we correct the mistakes of the past to ensure that every deserving school has the opportunities to run. As an interest in party, Elevate joins Danbury Charter School in respectfully requesting to be granted party status in this matter. Together, we can work together towards a fairer future for all charter schools in state Connecticut. Thank you.
Nina Ford, followed by Bishop McKissick.
And it is Anita Ford Saunders. Saunders is the last name. I live at 14 Mercury Lane in Middletown, Connecticut. Thank you, Commissioner, and members of the State Board of Education. It's probably my fourth time coming here and speaking to you all. I have a chair with my name on it, actually. Because I've come to, hopefully, convince you to support Capital Prep as you did when you voted unanimously to approve our school. We, as a country, are experiencing unprecedented miscarriages of justice every day. We find ourselves governed by an autocrat who refuses to adhere to the rule of law. That's one of the reasons why I'm here today. I am not going to repeat the law. You've heard what it is. You can look it up. Connecticut General Statute 1066E.E.K. You know what it says? You know what you're supposed to do? You know about the considerations and our enumerated factors that we all have in the law. The quality of the program, the academic success of the student, the school district, and the alliance district, and whether the applicant can prepare for facilities and staff. The Madam Commissioner and the SDE attorney acknowledged the law when we had this conversation and that they have just never followed. In hearing, in a hearing, your attorney cited a clarifying comment, a long later made 10 years ago. He defined it as intent, and that should be interpreted as outflanking the law. It's ridiculous, and it's just an excuse. Remember the rule of law? It shouldn't be used for the convenience of some with resources at the expense of others who don't have those resources. Their refusal to follow the law shouldn't be weaponized to keep marginalized communities and children from thriving. The law says the SDE is supposed to choose what charter school is to receive funding based on its status. If over the school that received the highest scores to grant the money to the school, paying in second, and subsequently never holding. Here we did the same with Danbury. You have been appointed, sit on this floor, to make wise decisions about education in Connecticut. On your website, in the section that says, defines educational interests of the state, it says, "In order to reduce racial, ethnic, and economic isolation, each school district shall provide educational opportunities for students that interact with students and teachers from other racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds." This is not happening in Middletown. Do you all know what's happening in Middletown? Read the papers. Get involved. It's also your duty to act and lead as educators, or at least as members of this board, to recommit every single day to the equitable education of all students in our state. And I'm wrapping up. It's your job. We have a middle school and a high school that's bursting at the seams. Capital Prep is a solution, as you pretend to be that. So please stop playing politics. We want to do some education. We're on the agenda. Today's what gave to youth the right thing, the right to yell. We stand up to political pressure and decide with integrity to adhere to the rule of law and give families and children in Middletown a chance to succeed. Thank you.
My full charge. I am not Bishop McKissick. Bishop McKissick could now, okay. And I'll explain to you why. Bishop McKissick was co-chair of the committee that started in 2022. At a meeting with the Lieutenant Governor after we informed that our funding was taken away, Bishop McKissick had a heart attack. Backseat was actually having a heart attack while we were meeting in the Lieutenant Governor's office, and none of us recognized him. He survived. He has had a very challenging year to begin, and asked me to read his letter for the women's blessing. Until my illness, I have been working diligently, as I put it, saying Capital Prep, Middletown, a reality. The staff of Capital Prep answered the call for applications, submitted a superior application, and was cited by you, the SDE, at the charter school that received the highest score in 2023. So, what does it mean these days to do your best? It must mean doing your best is just not enough, and that our children's lives are emotional. This process also taught us that behind the closed door, conversations were held for the sole purpose of stopping a school that taught about killing justice. The Capital Prep vision wouldn't be tolerated. Now we've learned that you did not follow the law in the vote. Instead, that your board is supposed to select the charter school with the highest score, with the greatest funding. Your refusal to follow the law by the administration we are living under now only sets a cruel and beneficial example for the students who want access to a system that will welcome them and embrace their value. On my first visit before my illness, legislators and even members of this board insinuated that we did not have support of our community, regardless of a half dozen community meetings, testimonies in the early stages of being here, letters forth that we were delivered, and even more letters that were brought to you before the meeting. Even the rumors that are still persistent about community support. Add to that scores of my, my parishioners and members of other congregations in Middletown and counseling families who were and are faced with significant situations perpetuated by a school system that is not welcoming. Is that anywhere near enough proof that we have community support? My faith is strong, and I continue to pray that Capital Prep will open in Middletown and give our families a chance, Bishop speaking. All we want is the same opportunity that our children have because of the options in our, in their communities. This is not the case in Middletown. We don't have educational options. People are crying, and people are hurting. We've done the right things, and I cannot understand why we haven't been stopped. We, why we've been stopped at almost every, and why no one will answer our question, "Why?" Who is hiding what and why? Why are children being held back from a great education? A school with a curriculum based in social justice? Maybe that's dangerous in your eyes and a threat to democracy. Teaching and challenging students to examine how social justice can change a society for the better is the thing that will save this country. This would be what saves us. I highly recommend the State Department of Education do what is right by the law and grant the appropriate funding to Capital Prep, Middletown. I'm Bishop William J. McKissick Jr., New Jerusalem Christian Center Church. Thank you. You can give that letter to Alden. Scott Estle, followed by Meredith Gabrin. That's not here. Meredith Gabrin, followed by Jill Hodgman.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Meredith Gabrin, and I reside at 1004 Canor Street in New Haven, Connecticut. I am here to speak in support of the waiver application for Javon Adote. Mr. Adote teaches at New Haven Academy Inter-District Management School, where I am a co-founder and a new member of the group. Mr. Adote is an alumnus of New Haven Academy. He excelled as a student and was an asset to the school. He excelled as a student and was an asset to the school and community when he attended this. He went on to study English and African Studies at the University of Magnet, and then he taught middle school through a teaching apprenticeship program in Philadelphia, ultimately earning a master's degree while teaching. Naturally, I jumped at the chance to bring Mr. Adote back to New Haven Academy. He teaches English in the same room where he once studied, and his students and advisors are aware of his connection to the school. They are drawn to him like a magnet, seeking his counsel and support throughout the day. He teaches ninth, eleventh, and third grade schools, including an elective in African-American literature. He integrates his own studies, his experiences growing up in New Haven, his family heritage, and his insights into the student. He brings creativity and thoughtfulness to our department meetings and titles. He has done a phenomenal job this year. I strongly believe that bringing back Connecticut Public School alumni to teach the next generation of students cannot be surpassed as an opportunity to enhance all of them. I cannot be prouder of Mr. Adote, and I urge you to vote for his waiver and miss.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jill Cover-Hodgman. I'm here today to speak in support of Capital Prep, Middletown. I come with 25 years in the Connecticut education law space, and nobody else can speak to this board today on the petition for the color of the word in the law by Tom Spohrini. It's unusual in law to face a situation like this one, where the specific scenario before you is exactly what was anticipated in that law. For Capital Prep, Middletown, and in Connecticut General Statutes 10-66EE, Sunset Fund K, that is exactly the case. The law envisions a scenario where, in giving physical care, more than one charter is granted, and initial certificate of approval by this body. But the General Assembly only funds one new charter school. In 2023, this is what it hurt. Two schools were able to grant a new charter. Capital Prep, Middletown, was the highest ranking respondent for the RFP for new charters. The commissioner issued a ranking sheet that was submitted to the Co-Reactions Committee Education Subcommittee Work Group on Part VII, 2023, that listed Capital Prep, Middletown first. These facts are not in dispute. Then, the General Assembly allocated new dollars to the charter school funding line in 2023. Just as the statute anticipated, there were not enough new dollars for both approved schools. Therefore, the highest ranking in that year in Capital Prep, Middletown, had to be funded first. The law specifically and clearly states the order in which schools should open. If, in any fiscal year, in this case, 2023, more than one new state charter school is approved and is awaiting funding pursuant to the provisions of this section, the State Board of Education shall determine, shall determine which school's funded first based on the consideration of the following factors, in order, and for, now shorten this. The quality of the program, as pursuant to 10-66BB, whether the applicant has demonstrated academic success for students, whether the school district has demonstrated need for soon improvement, and whether the facility staffing and outreach to students reflect the parent. 10-66EE, Sunset Fund K, clearly applies. It requires the State Board of Education to take appropriate action and grant Capital Prep, Middletown's motion for declaratory ruling and make Capital Prep a whole charter under the law. Please write this wrong. Thank you for that.
Elizabeth Sked, followed by Blanca Stella Camacho. Team? Members of Connecticut State Board of Education. My name is Elizabeth Sked. I'm the Education Issue Specialist for Connecticut Education Association. CEA represents over 155 school districts across the state. I'd like to start by thanking Dr. Shwana Tucker for including me last night in advising Science Day. It was an exceptional event, and I really look forward to working with those young people next year. So thank you for that. Items 7D and 7E on today's agenda can propose approval of certificates through waivers from existing certification requirements. As we've shared in previous testimony, CEA believes the term that I'm proceeding without first developing a clear, consistent process and set of standards for assessing such waiver requirements. I want to begin by acknowledging this is not the first time I've come before you to speak on this issue. The continued need to address such waivers reflects its importance and the need for thoughtful, deliberate action. We all recognize the urgency of the teacher shortage in Connecticut. Section 6 of Public Act 2441 aims to address this challenge by allowing the State Board to issue initial educator certificates to individuals whose combination of education and experience is deemed equivalent to traditional certification requirements. But without an established process for evaluating that equivalence rate, the risk for inconsistency is too high. I urge you to remember that the newly created Certification Educator Preparation and Certification Board was established precisely to bring the right expertise, representation, and perspective to bear on questions like this. The board is already at work and working hard. We must give them the opportunity to build a consistent system that reflects Connecticut's commitment to both excellence and equity in education. By pausing to let this body develop thoughtful, transparent guidelines, you'll strengthen the legitimacy of any future decisions and build trust among educators and the communities we serve. We continue to believe the determination of equivalent education and experience must include thorough reviews of official transcripts, documented employment history, and other relevant data. A defined process should guide these reviews, ensuring consistency, fairness, transparency, and accountability. As of today, no such process has been publicly shared. In short, this is too important to rush. Let's get it right. We respectfully urge the board to table these items and delegate the work of developing clear parameters to the Connecticut Educator Preparation and Certification Board. They are uniquely qualified and already doing the work to create a rigorous, yet flexible framework that can support innovation without compromising quality. Thank you again for your time and for your thoughtful consideration of this important matter. Please, Blanca Stella.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Madam Chair, Connecticut State Board of Education, Commissioner. My name is Blanca Stella Camacho, and I live on Portilly Drive, Danbury, Connecticut. And I'm here to support Capital Prep, Middletown. Members of the Connecticut State Board of Education, thank you for your time. I speak on behalf of thousands of parents, and yes, I did say thousands of parents, who have implored you to fund the Danbury Charter School. I'm a parent of four Danbury High School graduates. They were successfully graduated and moved on to higher education. Nevertheless, that doesn't give me the right to deny school choice to Danbury Charter School in free public school to other students. The continued interest and support has not ceased in Danbury. As a matter of fact, phone calls of interest have increased. Parents can't comprehend why the Connecticut State Department of Education would approve the Danbury Charter School in 2018, and yet it continues to be not funded. Parents shake their hands, heads, with the limited educational choices for the academic success of their children. I look around, in Danbury, obviously not here. I look around in Danbury and see disappointed parents. They continue to ask for your support, for your decision to finally allow the Danbury Charter School to get state funding. Individuals, groups, organizations, and busloads of school choice advocates have come to you, have come to the state Capitol year after year since 2018. In addition, there were thousands of petition signatures, in person and virtual testimonials, all consistent year after year. 2024, 2025 is no different. There is a strong continued, and I will repeat it again, there is a strong continued interest and support from the Danbury community and also for Capital Prep in Middletown. I urge you to consider the plight of these parents that are not here and students that are not here to finally provide the funding that the Danbury Charter School needs to open its doors. At this moment, right now, at this moment, there are numerous students lost in their academic journey. They're learning, they're daydreaming. Right at this moment, there are frustrated parents longing for a glimpse of hope. You have the decision in your hands. It should not be a difficult decision. Please find both, Danbury Charter School and Capital Prep, Middletown. Thank you all very much for your time and your consideration.
Diana Wensel, followed by Charlie Wensel.
Good morning, Commissioner Wenzel Tucker, here at your venom and esteemed members of the State Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the certification request for Javon Adote. Firstly, I want to applaud the innovation and the vision of the Commissioner and the board implementing a process to attract high-quality teachers to, or in this case, back to our state. Connecticut students need senior teachers who are prepared and ready to take in our communities. We need multiple pathways to our classrooms, and I appreciate the department for creating this process. I know that the valid process that the department was directed by the legislature to create is labor-intensive for the talent office and requires evaluating a combined experience and education of each candidate to determine the equivalence of the candidate's experience of education to go prepare our Connecticut educator preparation program. So I really want to thank Dr. Tucker and the talent teams for going the extra mile to bring talent to Connecticut. I'm believing, and they're doing the hard work. Javon Adote is exactly the kind of teacher we need in our schools. Javon has returned to Connecticut from teaching in Pennsylvania, and he's come back to teach in New Haven Academy, which is the high school in which he graduated. Javon's bachelor's degree at UConn and his master's in teaching, as well as his years of teaching experience in Philadelphia, all bring great value for the students of the school. However, the additional value of being from the community and the teachers who teach is extra special for this. By returning to teach in his own community, Javon demonstrates to his students that their community matters and that they matter. Thank you for your time today, and most importantly, for your vision to bring teachers like Mr. Adote back to Connecticut. And I can think of no better way to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week than to demonstrate to our students that teachers matter. Thank you for supporting teachers in finding innovative ways to attract our own students back to Connecticut.
Good morning, Commissioner, Vice Chair, and members of the board. My name is Charles Wensel. I'm from Manchester, Connecticut. I am here to speak in support of Javon Adote as well. First off, I would like to appreciate the Commissioner and the board for implementing the process to attract high-quality teachers to Connecticut, or again, in this case, encouraging one of our own to return. Education is one of the great strengths of our state, and it's a no-sfall small part due to the need of leadership that high-quality teachers gain to our classrooms. In an era of massive shortage, having a diverse set of pathways to classrooms is critical, and I applaud the leadership shown by the board in the department. I'm excited today to be able to testify for a teacher who not only represents the qualities that a pathway program seeks to find in educators, but also a testament to the educational strength of Connecticut schools themselves. Javon Adote is not just working to teach at an excellent school in New Haven Academy. He is striving to return to the school he graduated from as a high school student. He's a model of success for what our state schools can accomplish. NHJ New Haven Academy is also dear to my heart and is a school that I have the privilege to teach for my first placement after graduating from the University of Connecticut. Javon is a fellow UConn alumnus for his bachelors, and I think a few people have been more enthusiastic than trust helping develop the learning community NHJ going forward. Javon has experienced teaching in Philadelphia after getting his master's in teaching. He also represents a bond of mutual older Connecticut schools, showing students that they can be successful and return to their communities to help others do the same. I thank you for your time, and even more, thank you for the opportunity to help a learning community I care to pay about. New Haven Academy, see one of its own success stories return home to help develop the next generation of Connecticut students.
The last three speakers start with Mark Iris. James Rollins Jr. and, well, that was Reverend Robin Riley Anderson.
Good morning. It's Attorney Mark Samaruka. I'll be doing A for effort, though, in the foundation. I'm with the law firm of Pullman and Comley. I have had the high honor of privilege over my 33 years of practicing law to represent public schools, private schools, charter schools, magnet schools. I probably left some other kind of educational institution out there. I'm here speaking today on behalf of Capital Prep, Middletown. Look, I've heard quite a few speakers already today from Capital Prep. Some of them are probably much more eloquent than I am. I'm not going to repeat all their arguments. I present them as if they're my own. I've also already written a letter to this board on January 21st on these same issues. I spoke here on March 5th on these same issues, and I'm perfectly able to disclose I am the author of the petition that's been filed for the Senator on behalf of Capital Prep. So all those arguments I have in my own, I'll just say I have seen the opposed act of today, which is the resolution that's been prepared by your fine Department of Legal and Governmental Affairs. Hope I would ask that you support it. We hope that the State Board votes in favor of the resolution, and it frankly addresses all eight issues that are reflected in that. Because, I mean, we hope that the State Board of Education, the State Department of Education and staff keeps an open mind for the arguments that will be made. We think they're powerful arguments. And we look forward to presenting these arguments and evidence on the merits and whatever features that this may have going forward on this. And more importantly, our goal is, again, is to make Capital Prep, Middletown, a reality. It is long overdue. So I will give you words you'd like to hear. Those are the big center of my remarks. I wish you well, and we hope that Capital Prep can eventually be approved. Thank you.
Thanks.
You have my time. Bridge Academy is already on the agenda.
You're yielding your time to both?
No. Bridge Academy is already on the agenda, so I'll be coming up again.
Reverend Robin Anderson.
Good morning. We treat every one of you so good to see you and to know that you all are also gathering together to make decisions on behalf of the education of all children that we have in Connecticut. My name is Robin Anderson. I live at 65 Razzle Terriff in Middletown, Connecticut. And I come to speak on behalf of Capital Prep. I'm also the pastor of the Coffee and Design Church, also that's located in Middletown, in which we have, not only have courts that represent parents that offer extended children's school, we have to have an after-school program that has been in operation for over 40 years. I'm coming to really ask you all to also adhere to what you have already flagged. As everyone has spoken earlier about the decision that you voted on which had to have Capital Prep had the highest score for a charter school in which the funding was already in place. You voted on that. And just like we teach our children, also make sure that they follow their food and also that they go through the process of being able to get things accomplished. And also that they go through the process of being able to get things accomplished in the right way. And they're also going to find that the way in which they actually go through things and they're doing the right way. That they receive the results as in the papers. Well, that is what you all, if you were in favor of the charter schools. Capital Prep Charter School voted on that. You gave it the highest score. And so all I'm here today to ask you to also adhere to on behalf of other children following that example that you teach children. The right thing, that you also agree with the right thing on behalf of children. We need to have adversity around being able to be educated and making the most work of them. We all, we see that in many situations that we have with the delivery of children that have different academic needs. And so I'm asking you all some that we want the charter school in New Haven, Connecticut. And we also have the school system that said that we also could need a charter school. So that we're able to equally leave our children and our community and the diversity of their needs. So I'm asking on today, please, go forth to the difference that you make. Make the right, the wrong right, and let's move forward on behalf of our children. Thank you so much.
Hold on, it's our public participation. They have a motion on item four, consideration of the minutes of the December 2025. Do move. Any changes? Paul Rehman, Paula and my host, Jane, okay, there is, thank you. The board of the chair is next. Yeah, I have a couple of things. Starting with, first, I want to remind board members just with one thing, because as I go through some of these. Activities that happened in the last month were invites to remind board members that anytime you see in particular superintendent. Updates that you received, then any of those items in there is open to board members, and that you might, you may attend. Oh, that all, oh, but you're going. So I just want to remind board members. One of the first things, we, there was a symposium, a summit. In education leadership AI, and I know Dr. Lavis, you attended. I know Commissioner Paul is going to give us an update. Do you want to add anything about your attendance there? So thank you for attending that for us. Yeah, I'm sure it was. We've seen that. I was, I was hoping I could attend, but I could not, but yeah, it's very, it's exciting to see. The second one is NASB. We've had a few member engagements since our last meeting, and also a federal member engagement. Which the hour was just spent getting federal updates for all the board events across the country. So I know Kristin, you attended, as well as Dr. Zimmerman has attended. Paula, you, you have attended. So if you want to mention some of the things that occurred during those meetings.
Sure. We're on. So it's the latest member exchange, which was Monday afternoon. One of the major issues that was discussed was the fact that the state of Kansas received a denial for their new appeal for the S R funding. It was particularly surprising to the people on the meeting because. The two projects that Kansas had asked for the waiver were related to statewide literacy and math training for teachers. And also the usage, training for high-leverage, high-quality instructional materials in classrooms. And the US Department said that the denial was related to the fact that the projects support teachers rather than students. And so that was a very sobering statement to hear. And lots of concerns were raised by many other state board members from across the country. Other topics that were brought up on Monday also included cell phone policies that are being enacted in other states. You may have seen in the news that New York implemented a new policy. Several other states were talking. Particularly in the Midwest region about the policies for their states. There was also a large conversation about how in the current climate, some states are having difficulties. Or encountering perceived difficulties tracking student homelessness. And it was postulated that it could be related to the current immigration climate where. People are fearing identifying themselves as being homeless and then getting targeted in other areas. And so there was concern because the fear is that kids are being missed. There's also conversations about the difficulty with engaging families. About doubling up in homes still means that you are homeless and having that idea understood in the community. Across the country, there's some roadblocks to that in terms of delivering needed services to homeless students in our schools. So those are the major topics on Monday. I don't know if anybody else wants to talk about the federal.
I'll follow up with that. I gave testimony to Vermont's Education Committee last week on cell phones. They are very, they were very interested because they had seen the Commissioner with our cell phone guidelines. Very impressed, as we have seen also in NASB, has been very impressed across the country of our, how we went from instead of a band and we opened the guidelines. They're not just looking at a band, and there was a lot of questions asked as, you know, why we chose the guideline route. So right along those Connecticut is being looked at for that. Where they'll land, I don't, I don't know. But I did, did testimonies I speak on that. I do want to also wish all our teachers out there, happy Teacher Appreciation Week. That is so important. And I was able to do some fun, a couple of fun things with teachers in the last few days. My first one was that I went to the Fund for Teachers Fellows. Their announcement for, we have 63 new Connecticut fellows. I did write down some information that I read it. I know a lot of you know what the Fund for Teachers is, but the focus on most of the fellows this year in Connecticut. Were our understanding of cultural diversity for our fellows that won. That we have now in Connecticut since 2016, 1,172 fellows of the state of Connecticut funded by Valley of Education. So we're very, very fortunate to have that. Over 125 districts have participated in this, and we sent fellows out. It is their 25th anniversary nationally, but Connecticut has only been involved in about nine years. Nationally, there is over 10,000 teacher, teacher fellows. And they have visited over 170 countries in seven continents. So it's a pretty impressive stats to hear. My second event was just the other night. It was, I was able to speak at University of St. Joseph's Hooting Ceremony, in which. It was a master's ceremony, all teachers, some of them sitting teachers already, some of them becoming teachers. There was over 40 of them. And that was delightful to be sitting in a room and be able to speak to a world full of. People graduated from high school. So it was wonderful to be there and, and see so many educators, over 40 going on to deal with that. So that was also exciting. And since we're talking about teacher appreciation, and that's all about students, great student announcements. I think some of you know that Sophia is going to be attending Yale. And. Harvard. That is great. That is great news. They're still going to be with us for another meeting, but I wanted to announce that since they both made their decision. So congratulations. So well deserved. And just because of teacher appreciation, we are going to recognize our own Ms. Redford, who is our sitting teacher in this. So happy appreciation. Yes, that's my report.
Thank you very much, and going to see all of board members today, and welcome back to Connecticut. You know, first acknowledging Teacher Appreciation Week, as was mentioned. And certainly on behalf of the Department, I express a heartfelt thank you. Your incredible educators for their dedication and passion. And to join me in that discussion, not discussion, but to share about what makes this special, we have a video for you. That in the voice of our students and.
Ready for this day.
Oh, yeah? How are you ready?
Um, it's because like I've always, I love videos and I've always wanted to be in one. She is very, 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 very kind, nice, and respectful. Yeah, she's kind. She's helpful. She's cute. She's beautiful. She's lovely.
He like helps us want to be here.
She's sweet, caring, loving, and smart.
She's very nice and kind, and she always treats people fairly.
If you're like having trouble with something, she can like really teach you and like get to, get you to really understand.
She would like tell me to stand up for myself.
He makes me feel safe.
She always like helps people and she, and she like starts with the basic things.
She's a great teacher and she gives us a lot of things that whatever we need, she gave us what we need.
She teaches in like a different way where she like explains everything so everyone understands, which is better. And it like makes everybody like understands, everybody knows what they're doing.
He's also that one teacher who like is not boring at all. He's always makes sure that something fun is in the day.
He's really funny and he makes learning fun.
Tidy up, don't make a mess, and when you make one, clean it up.
Like if anything bad happened at home, you could talk to her and she'll do a lot of stuff.
Don't crack your knuckles.
He's funny and if you don't like a school, you're gonna like it if you're in his class. Because he makes it really enjoyable.
Thank you for everything you taught me. Everything you've. Done for me so I can make it to seventh grade. Thank you for everything.
Thank you for being kind and respectful to everyone in my class. Thank you for being my teacher.
Audio difficult, but you get the gist. Just having their voices, but they're very all of our, their futures. Also today, along with Lieutenant Governor Bice, which will be launching our fourth annual school staff appreciation backpack. I know it's a mouthful initiative. Like in prior years, thanks to connected businesses, pre-K 12 school staff, including adult education programs. That were able to access special discounts throughout the summer. And so you'll be seeing that video and promotion that's happening, trying to get businesses. To join and be able to give discounts to our school staff throughout the summer that they can all participate in. The least we can do, but basically say thank you for everything that you do. So let me once again provide a few updates on actions related to federal transitions. Regarding funding, again today, we continue to access without interruptions funding for all the federal programs that we administer. From both the Department of Education and the US Department of Agriculture for all the child nutrition program funding. Next, as you are aware, the department submitted a response to the Department of Education's April 3, 2025 Reminder of Legal Obligations Communication. Regarding the departments and the local district certification of Title VI. We also shared with you that on April 24th, in a federal court in Washington DC, they issued a preliminary injunction. Prohibited the Department of Education from taking any adverse actions related to arising from that letter. The certification that states were asked to complete. So we share that with you as well. Going back to Ms. Records' update, I shared last month that we received extended liquidation approval. For districts and the Department for utilization of the COVID funds. That extension was given to us in February through March 28 of 2026, which was subsequently rescinded on March 28, 2025. The department followed new instructions outlined and even submitted the first budget. Of continued liquidation extensions for projects. We submitted 11 projects, those that were previously approved. We followed the instruction, which was number one, to discuss, to share how a particular project's extension is necessary. To mitigate the effects of COVID and Americans' students' education. And number two, why the department should exercise discretion to grant the requests. Again, this is the first round for us, where as we speak today, preparing more submissions. From the department does have a webpage dedicated to this, and as of May 2nd. They received over 220 project-specific requests from 32 states and territories. They're all listed in the C-Connecticut is listed there as well. The department reviewed and issued determinations for 31 projects from six states to date. Connecticut has not yet received our response, but I know we're in the queue because we didn't get one follow-up question. From the department that we responded to. So as we are right now, we will await that response while we continue to. Put together the package for our specific submissions as well. I don't know if there's a. On that specific from board members.
Sorry, I have a question that reflect my limited reading of the. Do you just put to the judge, enjoy the suspension of those ones in some states in Connecticut, one of those states or by, by, by just reading.
I'm looking at our attorney, it's happened maybe yesterday.
Yeah, I did have, you know, the court did issue an injunction by enjoining states, the US Department of Education from, you know, reverse all of its prior.
Yes.
extensions, but only however binding on the states of New York, California.
That were part of that. Part of the law, so we're not covered by that.
Commissioner, I know it is. The districts that are impacted by this.
It's about 20 Connecticut districts, 22, I think it was.
Is it, is it a situation that the programs that were approved have, they're ceased?
And what most of districts have done, what we've got is the pause. Where we are until we get a response. So we are also, as we speak, we can, our fiscal office staff are preparing those submissions. So we're going, we're continuing to do the submissions. I've talked to colleagues yesterday, other chiefs, they've achieved and got a sense of. What response that they've received. And so using that to inform further submissions as well. But as we are right now, we did submit our first round of projects, and we're still awaiting that response.
Commissioner, if I may, just to follow up on that. In time that the multi-state litigation was being contemplated, we were advised that if you seek an extension, you cannot join the multi-state. It was really kind of a roll of the dice. As yesterday's court decision essentially is saying that the department can't go 180 without giving four days notice. So it's something that I'm not sure how that's going to make it out.
They might get only an initial two weeks.
Yeah, exactly. And again, you would have a opportunity of seeking an extension that we opted for litigation.
Yeah, see, that's a tough call, right?
Great. And the queue will keep you posted. I am checking the emails every day. And I know, by the way, they've also instituted an appeal process. So if you denied your 30 days to submit an appeal, then I believe those are going to the secretary. In your supplemental packet, you do have my report. I will go through all of it. I know I'm sensitive for time. But also you should know your packet is the great setting study that we talked about here for special education. So I did put that in your supplemental, so you do have that, and you will continue to. Hear more about what is happening at the legislative front that is aligned to the great setting that we did study at that. For board priorities, we, is one in that, my, in my report, you'll notice that the Office of Dyslexia and Dyslexia continues to do great work. In events that they had, and they also are moving forward and they're taking action later. On their educator competencies for strategic literacy and dyslexia that the office has worked on and will be creating. We also launched a PPA. We also launched a PSA, uh new PSA to inspire students and families to stay engaged throughout the last phase of school. We recognize as a school year near its end, every remaining day is a critical opportunity for student learning and connection. So we continue looking at our data on chronic absence and monthly basis, um we continue to say, stay engaged, stay connected on the school through the end of school year. As Vice Joe Benham noted, we did host a day of AI uh in educational, education leadership summit at Central Connecticut State University. Very well attended. Uh the governor was there and Dr. Lavis, thank you again for uh being in the audience. Uh we, a keynote was delivered by Jeff Riley, former Massachusetts Education Commissioner, working as a part of an MIT initiative to innovate learning and education in the era of artificial intelligence. And so it was great conversation, also learning from districts that are part of the, the pilot that we are operating here in Connecticut and will serve. We met uh last month with members of the New York Education Office of the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office to discuss the next steps in our partnership between the department and the Ministry of Education in Taiwan. When we posted on that, we discussed, see the picture, but we discussed uh the recruitment of uh teacher candidates uh from Taiwan to Connecticut. Of emotional materials to encourage Connecticut schools to participate in a specific school partnership that we have and also setting up scholarship programs for exchange of uh people going back and, and also ideas and stuff for studies. So we will be able to do that as well. I brought together the commissioner superintendent advisory panel, as I do every couple of months, to hear from our districts locally what's happening. And I bought into that meeting, the commissioner for the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Commissioner Higgins, who had really great conversations around school safety. What do we do as school ends and as we're moving into the summer and being prepared for the next school year? And so that was really great conversation uh to add there. Internally, I held a staff meeting, all our teams coming together across the agency. Uh we don't get to do that often enough, but it was great to get everyone together to celebrate community. And really to celebrate the expansion of our team, we have expanded by twenty-two percent over the year, year and a half. You've heard us come to this board meeting and talk about staff and challenges. And so in the past year and a half, we've added forty-eight new hires to the agency across eleven different offices. Twenty-two percent added to the agency. Uh of that, we added uh some new managerial positions, but mostly in non-managerial positions in the agency. We added a special education bureau chief and Catherine Matts, I think is in the audience. Catherine, are you here? There she is. So our new uh viewers chief here for special education coming to us from region nine as a special educator, and we're looking forward to her added expertise to the agency. So we're really pleased about that. Thank you very much for being at your first board meeting. And Mr. Harris will be pleased to know that we have a, a constant examiner coming to the Office of Internal Audit started on May sixteenth and we continue to add there as well. Uh we also participated in the annual Right to Read Literacy Forum that was hosted by Khan Canada Right to Read Coalition at the Legislative Office Building. Dr. Lavis uh joined us there at that event as well. Uh and you'll be getting an update in a few minutes on that space. And you know, just the last shout-outs, uh you heard that Vice Joe Benham, he delivered the keynote address at the hooding ceremony. So congratulations on that. Uh and also uh our own Jen Mitchellak was recognized uh for her work in math and so wanting to congratulate her um for the work that she's doing here, making sure that you do your numbers. That's really important and across our state. And finally, uh congratulations to Dr. Shawna Tucker. Uh you'll see them all dressed up at the Callas Gala uh event, uh but she was recognized as a twenty twenty-five, one of the twenty twenty-five equity champion for the work that she's doing in the talent office. So Shawna, congratulations. Thank you very much for the work that you do. Thank you very much. With that, uh we will provide a board update on Bridgeport Public Schools. Uh Dr. Hughes is already sitting at the back and then we'll do a literacy update.
Morning. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Vice Chair, State Board of Education members. I sit here for you today providing with an update, like the state department's effort to address stability of Bridgeport Public Schools. If you do your supplemental packet, you'll see the full report, which I'll survive and I'd like to say. As you're aware, the State Department of Ed has a technical assistance team, which I refer to as the team as I, I think, see. Uh consisting of three highly experienced former superintendents, the executive director, the Educational Resource Center, Dr. Dr. Henry Kennedy. Additionally, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education is providing a training and support to the Bridgeport Board of Education. Since the last update in April, the team has been visiting with the districts uh two to three times a week. CIRC has conducted eighteen additional listening sessions, of which uh were reported on last, last month. And CAVE has provided three additional trainings to the Bridgeport Board of Ed since our last meeting. Three themes of concern were identified in April after the first month of involvement. They include financial and HR procedures and decision makings, facilities and maintenance, and the regular and special education instruction. And since last month, the team has deepened their understanding of each area of concern and a few highlights of new findings that are also included in the report are as follows. First, the team identified Bridgeport Public Schools underfunded, underbudgeted four line items in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, which is believed to be a major contributor to the current budget deficit. Second, the UMassic High School has an anticipated enrollment that already exceeds the building's capacity even prior to opening. Finally, despite the fact that Bridgeport Public School teachers work diligently to meet the individualized needs of students, there is variability in special education instruction and curriculum implementation across special education classrooms. Through the course of meeting with the district over the last month, a new theme of concern has emerged, that being school climate. Bridgeport Public Schools continues to struggle with rising chronic absenteeism, experiencing a March twenty twenty-four to March twenty twenty-five increase from twenty-seven percent to just over thirty-two percent in chronic absenteeism rates. In addition, there is an overrepresentation of Black, African-American, Hispanic-Latino, and students with disabilities in school and out of school suspension. Despite these additional findings, the team is taking action in support of the district to address these concerns. For example, the team is assisting the district develop budget and grant manual, has worked with the city of Bridgeport to add modules to the district's financial software to generate monthly fiscal reports, and is supporting the district identify opportunities to save transportation costs and request excess cost reimbursements for in-district placements. The team is also assisting Bridgeport Public Schools prioritize the, the filling of certified special education teacher vacancies in self-contained classrooms. The team is working alongside Connecticut State Department of Ed and Bridgeport Public Schools to implement IEP quality training for special education staff by training the trainer institute for special education administrators and a two-day leadership institute for Bridgeport Public School administrators on the topics, on topics related to special education. As you can see, there's a significant amount of training that's being planned and, and moving forward. The CSD and the team are also working with Bridgeport to reintegrate the Connecticut literacy model and coordinate help for literacy training for certified staff in the coming months. For school climate, CSD will provide technical assistance to the district. On the Connecticut School Climate's, Climate Guidance that was recently released and will work with Bridgeport Public Schools to coordinate training for administrators on topics related to school climate. Additionally, CSD will continue to support Bridgeport implement the learner engagement attendance, attendance program, or better known as LEED, and the district's campaign to improve attendance. It's entitled Start Strong, Finish Strong. Since February, the Bridgeport Board of Ed has received four of the six trainings provided by CAVE and has developed Bridge, uh Board of Education goals based upon their self-assessment survey results. CSD will be providing feedback on those goals to ensure they are both measurable and achievable. In addition, with the support of CAVE, the Bridgeport Board of Ed has made progress addressing the twenty-three out-of-compliance or non-existent mandated policies by passing nine policies in the last month, putting the goal to address the remaining fourteen by the end of June. As you might recognize, the CSD and technical assistant team has been very busy working with VPS to continue to identify areas of concern and take immediate action to address those concerns. And again, the team highlights how passionate and dedicated the Bridgeport staff are to the students of Bridgeport and that there is motivation to improve the district. The coming months, the CSD will expect to see its feedback incorporated in Bridgeport Board of Education goals and for the Board of Ed to approve bylaws and rules of the forum. In conclusion of the next two trainings, the commissioner will determine whether additional training is necessary. At this point in time, I invite board members to ask questions that they might have in our continued support of Bridgeport Public Schools and its students.
Thank you very much for the comprehensive report. Um two things that in my mind fall under school climate that we heard at the last meeting were particularly related to students' um comments and feedbacks about uh the types of instruction that they were receiving, um but also food issues. Um and I'm wondering uh what else has been determined in terms of necessary support for those two particular items?
Great question. So relative to instruction, um and it is mentioned in the report, but I didn't highlight it directly because it's just an issue. We met with the district uh two weeks ago and they identified the need for um comprehensive curricular supports. And they are looking into our model curriculum, the State Department of Ed, and provide it. So we want to provide them with the support to implement that curriculum and the identified resources that's supported, uh integrated in the classroom. So, so we are trying to build up and support the district from uh a more comprehensive approach. But then there are instructional supports, as I mentioned, um for teachers working with the Connecticut literacy models, but particularly at the elementary level, to uh aid teachers with the research-based, evidence-based instructional strategies that will support literacy for student.
I think what I was very struck by was the students' comments about um wanting to be instructed by people rather than on a device. So um what is, I guess, kind of what is the plan to sort of acknowledge or change that old practice in perception that's going on in the school?
And that is a, there are a number of concerns that connected to that challenge. As you, as you, being a teacher, are well aware, that is a large systemic change that we're working on um part and parcel in the different areas of intervention. I will also note that uh we, as also listed in the report, the district uh does not have a refresh cycle for their students and adult devices. They invested a significant amount of money. Um so that is going to necessitate not only a resource shift, but also an instructional shift. So it will be initiated there as well as providing the professional development supports that I was listening before, uh for teachers.
And a, as a practicing educator, I know what it's like to live in an environment where technology is aging out and there is not a solution in place uh to mitigate that. And so um I would just hope that as this continues, um it's a knowable and foreseeable issue and a shift that needs to take place. And I, I would hope that if we again sat with students um in the fall and in the winter, we would hear them uh hear them say different things about the type of instruction they receive.
That they are in front of a highly certified educator and engaged by their resources.
That would be wonderful. And then the food, your concern? Thank you.
So um and nutrition is something that we are currently working with the district, um as, as there are uh other components of um the evaluation and support corrective actions that the district has to take relative to nutrition. Uh so that is under active support. Uh I don't have my colleague here, John Frazzinielli, to speak to that directly, but his team is working with the district um to, to make sure that the identified areas of concern are being addressed um at the district levels.
Thank you.
And I should just add, Ms. Records, that those two topics in our visit to Bridgeport last week, that those two topics were discussed openly, when we were.
Thank you.
Dr. Hughes, I know when Bridgeport first, the first and second time they came to accountability, um a concern, um what we landed here at the board was each, the board, he, and the willingness to engage. I know you've said that they've had um support things and they have two more. Has that, have you seen an improvement there of willingness, I guess is the lack of other words, uh of participation?
Yes, and in fact, I have um watched most, all board meetings and trainings that have occurred um that I like to say in the speed of one point five so that I can uh get through them fast enough. Certainly, uh certainly, the board is engaging in very good in-depth dialogue around what needs to be in place, both to support them as an entity uh but as individuals. There certainly are areas that need to be addressed. Uh and as highlighted before, the board bylaws to ensure that the operations of the board as an entity um are moving forward in a appropriate manner and there are ways to address concerns that might arise. But similarly, in their rules of decorum and how to interact with each other outside, so on and so forth. We also see an opportunity to um the Board of Education goals that CAVE has facilitated, uh the, the Bridgeport Board of Education have struck so far, we do want to take that to the next level so that there are those um observable outcomes and improvements for all to see um that the board will be making together as an entity. I believe that answers your question.
And it's good to hear.
And may I just say, I know Chris McCarthy is sitting right behind us.
Anyone.
Okay, I didn't want to put her on the spot either, but this constant conversation in our meeting with Bridgeport as well, the administration brought up issues of concerns that they have about just how they work together. And I know that information is coming back to CAVE as well. So there's a feedback loop as we're getting information to go back as CAVE is working with the board to address those issues. So we were there for, I think, close to two hours, very directly and candidly addressing the issues that are at hand and working together on solutions, going back to academics and the model curriculum. Very clear, you should not spend any resources when we've already developed model curriculum with all the resources available to you. So those, that's the do-over kind of conversations. Maybe with the team that is saying to them, I'm literally talking to transportation officials to try to negotiate a better deal for transportation. That is the input and engagement of the team that is on ground, working in the district. So I keep saying, this is not, I'm not charging with bringing back a hundred-page report to me at the end of all of this. It is, what are you learning? What can we do immediately to be addressing the issues while we're there? And also to be thinking about, and what is this next school year look like? So we're finishing the year and what is the next school year? Time for the work that needs to be done. So we're looking at everything. I know Deputy Commissioner Cynthia Sonnen-Moyano with, with our special ed team working to figure out CIRC, providing professional development, giving in the classroom work. That is the work that we're doing literally to make sure that we're seen and connected.
And then I also might uh just have a follow-up for you, Board of Education. We do have regular, I do have regular conversations with the trainers, um with CAVE touch base after the trainings correspond. And our technical assistance team has been members included and, and provided some of the training on pertinent topics. So there's a good working relationship across all the entities that are in support of the district.
That's good. Thank you for your important, thanks, Steve, for your ongoing training.
Sure.
Mr. Harris.
Technology.
She's going up.
All of my thanks to you, Dr. Mills, and to your entire team. You know, back maybe five, six years ago, back in my days as president of CAE, we did this very same thing, not to this extent that you're doing it now. My only concern is the upcoming election of new board members. And are we putting things in place so that we don't end up having this again next year?
Very good question. That is one that, just talking with our CAE trainers on identifying that just bring a very different construct, which is why it is, I would say, three things are very important. Number one, rule of clear, delineated, and fully accepted bylaw, right? Everybody on that board must understand what bylaws drive the board's operation. Number two, support first principles of the forum. How do we engage? How do we act in and out? And what mechanisms are in place to ensure that when those, when less than favorable interactions occur, that they are addressed appropriately by the board? And number three, is essentially starting to engage the board in a collective vision for moving forward as, as an entity on behalf of students. Because then it doesn't matter which individual member sits on that board, they are unit working together in support of students that reflects a larger vision of the community.
And we continue to make sure we keep the community informed. At the end of the day, they vote when it's time for elections. And so understanding the, what's required for the board and driving the results in the system, I think, is also very important.
Well, questions for Dr. Hughes, for Bridgeport.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to an update on our literacy efforts. It's been a little while since we've done that here with the board. And so I wanted to make sure that we just spent a few moments. You heard a public testimony around literacy-related issues. We did apologize for that. You're updated on that. And you do have a deck. It's a part of the deck as well.
I'm remaining at the table in support of my colleague, Dr. Olesky, who will bring you through the presentation.
Hey, good morning, everyone. It's great to see everybody, and I so appreciate being here. Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Chair Benham, and the other board for your continued support. So it is my privilege to provide for all of you, becoming a yearly update to all things literacy coming out of the center. Some of the board members who have been here previously will notice replication slides. I did that purposely to inform some of our new board members about the center. So if you could just maybe answer that, too. Oh, I did not know that. Thank you. And why, then, two thousand years, I'm gonna push you now, and I'm gonna go. Thank you. Let's just do that, then. Pardon me. All right, so you'll see here the why and the what. In July one, twenty-one, our commissioner did create the Center, the Center for Literacy Research and Reading Success here at the State Department of Education, together with the council, which I'll explain on the next slide. We created this why, how, and what that really resonated with all of them, as well as the community of stakeholders. And it's really that every Connecticut student, every single one, has a right to read at or above grade level independently and proficiently by the end of the grade. The council. So who is the council? The Reading Leadership Implementation Council is a legislative body of individuals who come together every other month, sometimes monthly, depending on the work. And their goals are to support the center and the director, including myself, and inform the center of what's going on in the community and with their stakeholder groups. And then we work collaboratively to craft next steps. You'll see here some of the bigger projects in which they were involved. They were reviewers for the Connecticut approved curriculum models and programs. They were co-creators of the center's goals, which I'll talk a little bit more about, and also the CAE three literacy strategy. At each meeting, we have designated time for them to share with us, with me and their fellow council members about any insights, comments, and thoughts they have. I also take time to do, kind of like we're doing today, an update on what's going on professional learning, financial incentives across the state, et cetera. So the center plan that was on there, like I said, that is co-created and created with the council, outlines what the center is to do for responsibility, goals, and strategies to really lift all teachers and educators as well as students. You'll see here the funding assistance. That was something that we dreamed and it became possible. So the Black and Puerto Rican Caucus generously provided twenty million dollars in ARPA funds for districts, charter schools to utilize, and the state department to utilize for professional learning, for approved assessments, as well as the approved curriculum models and programs. The ARPSER small-town grant, we like to say, we said this at the forum as well, that the commissioner looked in the couch cushions and found four point five million, because we know our small towns don't always fit based on the number of students. So it was students under one thousand, one thousand students total had access to these funds. And we'll look at the next slide. So it also was really the professional learning and coaching. How can we support districts with the shifts, with understanding the science, and with implementing something we're out of new? So once again, we were very fortunate to have these funds, not only from that, but a dedicated line of government's budget for literacy. And using these funds, we were able to support and some additional ARPSER. We were to work with the academic office for the Science of Reading Masterclass. And that was something with CAPS, as you'll see, creating and forty-one teams up on the ground. The Hill for Literacy adoption process, this was another partnership to assist schools and districts in picking from the approved menu of programs and curriculum models, and then also implementing it. And that was with fourteen districts. Additionally, we had the ARPA Right to Read statewide training. This was over one hundred and thirty districts. If you did apply for the ARPA Right to Read funds, then you had to participate in this. If you participated in the masterclass, then you did not necessarily have to do this. It was an option for you. But through this and through the masterclass, ninety-five percent of our schools, districts and charter schools now have a strategic plan, a literacy plan, around CAE three literacy. We also have CTLM, our Connecticut Literacy Model, which Dr. Hughes referenced for Bridgeport. This has been going on for years, bearing your endear to the Black and Puerto Rican caucus in parts, because we are, once again, working with those districts that also support us, as Bridgeport, Hartford, et cetera. And that seventy-six schools across aligns and opportunities exist. Also, we have more professional learning. So we've been working also with TNTP, that are working with districts and charter schools and workshops as well, to help them with their implementation process. The NICS for WestEd is going to be starting next year. We're working with districts, and the cost we've targeted, once again, is small districts, to assist them with these shifts and understanding values and some reading. And then we have our partnership with the Rusty Finning Group, and they've been really amazing. We have partnered across the state with all of the classes. We had districts and schools coming together to talk about life programs. So those who chose into reading, those who chose open woods, number of wonders. They come together, they share their challenges, their successes. They talk about assessments, they talk about lesson plans, and they receive coaching as well. So this is the.
I've made us interrupt, the Finning Groups have really accelerated supports for implementation for districts and facilitated those conversations that helped them toward the curve.
Thank you so much. We recognize at the State Department how important it is, just to piggyback off what you're saying, that districts are getting each other, and they are having conversations, and they are supporting one another in terms of change. So we do this not only through our professional learning experiences, but also by providing the online. So my meeting's back, we're also here in the audience today. I've been working with districts to create webinars, we're working podcasts. We have listservs that go out regularly to coaches and administrators, updating them on professional learning and highlighting districts with quotes from the districts. And then we have our website, which we are working with our communications department to update and make it more friendly to various stakeholders and users. Um, if you could just, thank you very much. So numbers, right? So here we go. Ninety-five percent of our schools and districts have engaged in the professional learning that I mentioned. Ninety-five percent. I am looking at one hundred and eighty, because there are one hundred and eighty charter schools and districts that have CAE three. So I have one hundred and eighty, ninety-five percent have been participating. Ninety-five percent, as I referenced, also received this coaching and support and created these strategic literacy plans. Ninety-four percent did accept the funds and went forward with the small-town grants. And ninety-one percent of the districts and charter schools accepted the grant funds for the ARPA Right to Read. And once again, using those to buy materials to support their students' CAE three, the CAE three assessments that are approved, as well as the programs and curriculum models. So what have we been hearing from the field, which in a minute you're going to hear from them, which is so exciting? But we have been hearing that there are significant increases in teacher learning and understanding of the science of reading, that they have seen students already, that increases in their understanding, especially around phonics and awareness. So looking at a word, looking at letters, knowing what your sounds say. It's always awful when you hear your voice. So there have been increases there, which is so exciting to see. So whenever you're ready, yes, we can hear the voices from the field. This is something that Matt and others can. Get ready for chills.
Bookworms has allowed us to connect with our science curriculum. We talk about life cycles and magnets. It also incorporates a variety of SEL topics, such as being brave and how friends help each other.
I remember the first year a teacher came to me and said, what I would have expected my student to write in January or February, they're doing a knockover. So that tells you right there the level of rigor and the expectation, and the kids are able to rise to it.
Our writing and reading blocks no longer feel separate. Everything we're doing in reading lends itself directly to what students are writing and the skills that they need, along with the integration of science and social studies. Everything just flows so well and feels complete.
Coaches are learning right alongside our classroom teachers and supporting our classroom teachers in the implementation. We know that this is a really valuable component of implementing any new curriculum.
We will be updating our report card to more represent the science of reading and writing. So currently, our report cards only contain the Common Core standards, which we feel are a little vague and don't represent the skills that are taught. And we want our report cards to reflect the strands of the reading rope to really give a full picture of student learning in terms of the science of reading.
When you see our data in our charts, you can see that clearly we had an issue, and what we had been doing was not working the way we needed it to. This data analysis prompted us to do an in-depth literacy review with Dr. Michael Rafferty. Based on Dr. Rafferty's recommendations and our own analysis, we shifted away from TC and balanced literacy and revised our ELA curriculum. As we did so, we embraced the science of reading approach and research-based programs and assessments.
Personally, the families that I have for my second-grade students have expressed that they really appreciate the caregiver letters that go home with each domain. Also, as a parent myself, my son is in kindergarten. We can see the vocabulary that they're learning. We can help reinforce those concepts at home. It's really helped enrich our conversations at the dinner table or when we're driving around town. And we can really bring the learning home and make it be full circle.
And so I would say to the CSD, the more that you can bring us around the table to have these collaborative conversations is increasingly important as we think about all children in the state of Connecticut to help move progress forward.
Well, I just think we're in a really fortunate time that we are all collaborating to help our kids to become the next generation of readers. We're in a world where there's so many demands on kids nowadays and so much to take their attention. And the fact that we can all collaborate around something that is a fundamental skill that can open up doors and opportunities for them in multiple languages around literacy is really wonderful to be working together like this. I really hope that we are able to celebrate what this can do for Connecticut and for our schools in the future.
We've definitely heard from some stakeholders. As you know, we are always putting stakeholders into the work. And based on their recommendations, we have been recon for many years, and we're actually revising it for CAE as well, for more unstructured literacy. And at the end, if they still choose, they can take the IDA structured literacy exam and become structured literacy, which is pretty cool. I also want to give a shout out to my colleagues in Oakdale. They are amazing. I don't know if you're hearing from them today or if it's staying in dunda, but we are truly partners in the work. There we go. Any questions?
Thank you for that very thorough report. I'm glad to hear and hear your remarks, as well as remarks from to teachers, that it's no longer, reading and writing is no longer outside of the thing, and it's integrated, because that makes the difference. And it's nice to see that and the amount of effort that's been done. So thank you. I'll answer questions from the board. Is that morning?
Great, yeah. Thank you, Dr. Henry, for this report. Done on this critical, you know, elements of, I guess, curriculum and adoption. I have two perspectives on this, I guess. One is as a parent, actually, my, my kids and the school. And then actually, one of them was in kindergarten, sort of prior to the adoption of these kinds of songs, reading master forms, who are in kindergarten now. And I feel that the latter has actually really benefited a lot from these reforms. As a parent, it's been great to see. Admittedly, the sample size there is small. That brings me to my second perspective, which is as sort of a scientist, I guess, or researcher. And I'm curious, you know, one, one thing the state is really well-positioned to do compared to some of the districts or some of the students and teachers who we refer to, is to take a step back and make sure that we are, we are sort of systematically evaluating whether these programs, which sure seem like they're working, actually are when we step back in and look across the state to go beyond anecdote, I guess, at some level. And I'm curious what, what the plans are there, you know, like, thanks to you, we hear this. We might have had enough time in some of these programs to start seeing these results at the aggregate level.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Yes, research is very important to us. Right now, a lot of the research that we're doing has been qualitative, and we're listening to voices, having them quantitatively, and the Connecticut literacy model works. Bearing student scores on the CAE three assessments, also looking at our smarte balance score. We were very excited about a project we were doing with CSER, which we've been talking about, right?
We'll be talking about it in just a few minutes.
Yeah, I'm very interested about that, where they were doing that, going to districts and schools, we had interviews. So we'll get an update on that soon. So thank you, especially as a parent, I appreciate you.
I will just follow up and say that that type of anecdotal information, though, that feedback is what we're hearing across the state by both educators, parents, that engagement to the quality of the instructions so much. Listen, I personally agree this seems great, so ultimately you you have to see it. Yeah, exactly.
And and as you know, I love to ask the question so what? Obviously, the investment, and we hear that anecdotal, but you're right, we need research around it. And so that is the next presentation that you will be hearing. Uh, thank you very much from Ajit.
Yes, because we're on the the topic of literacy. Uh, I do uh would like to move, let me make sure I'm doing this correctly. Um, so I have set an app. It's revised menu of K grades, K through literacy universal screening assessment. I'd like to move that and the agenda if I have the motion on that place.
So move.
Approved. Okay.
Before we cheat, I just want to add to underscore what Dr. Simon asked about is one of the things that we've probably have been doing is really evaluating our investments. And so the issue, I don't, I know that our quite few of these literacy efforts were part of that list as well. So let's update us with that while we find out more about the assessment. So thank you.
Sure. Good morning. Glad to be here, Ajit Gopala, Chief Performance Officer for the department. And I'm here today uh on behalf of the team to seek board approval of additions to the department's approved menu of research-based A three literacy universal screening assessments. Um, I will be presenting with two researchers uh who are joining us virtually, uh who've been working with us closely on that. And I'm gonna uh take a moment here to let them introduce themselves. So first, Dr. Trump and Miller, and then Dr.
Hello, good morning. I'm delighted to be here with you this morning. My name is Dr. Adria Truckenmiller. I'm an Associate Professor of Special Education at Michigan State University, and I have both research and practical expertise in assessment, in reading and writing, and um have been uh working pretty in depth on those features of effective um assessment for uh about fifteen years now.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Michael Coyne. I'm a faculty member, professor at the University of Connecticut at the Niag School of Education. Um, and it's great to be here with you today, also to hear the updates on all the incredible literacy reading work that's going on in Connecticut. Um, I really want to thank the Commissioner and Dr. Hickey uh for all the work leading these efforts in Connecticut and happy to be part of the team that was helping to evaluate the Connecticut-approved literacy assessments.
And thank you to the doctor for connecting us with Dr. Trump and Miller. Um, and so that we could engage in this work. And I sit here alone, but I don't work alone. There's a huge team actually that works on this in the office and performance. We have Dave Chris, who's the Bureau Chief, Katie Seifert, Ken Johnson, Michelle Rosado. But we don't even just work in performance in this work. We worked with staff in academics and talent, including Chief Academic Officer, Karisi, Melissa Hickey, Joanne White, here's the salaries, and Crystal Allen. So we are, we are a team across the agency doing this work. Um, the plan here for for me for this morning is to uh present to you a little bit, give a little bit of background, and then I'm actually gonna turn it over to Dr. Trump and Miller to walk you through some uh grounding on the assessments and also highlight the key findings from their uh review. And based on those findings, I'll come back and wrap up with uh recommendations. But I'm trying to keep it brief. I know there's still a long agenda here, so. Um, I'll just say a few opening remarks before I turn it over to Dr. Trump and Miller here. You know, we we were coming to you with a revised menu. And when making a judgment about an assessment, whether it's any good, you have to look at valid the assessment itself. But you also have to look at how the results from that assessment will be used and whether there is sufficient evidence to support the use of that assessment in that way. And that's huge. You know, you could have a great assessment, but if you make a conclusion or inference that it's not supported, that's actually an invalid use of the assessment. So I mean, I could give a child a, you know, a a test that gives them reading passages and asks them to find the main idea in those uh in those passages, a multiple choice test. And then at the end of it, if I conclude that the kid gets many items wrong, that the kid has issues with spelling, that would be an inappropriate uh conclusion. It may have some challenges, but that's not what the assessment's about. So it's really what inferences are you making? And how are you using the results? That is the key here. So one assessment cannot serve many purposes, and that's really, really important. We wanted that magic assessment, it would be really long and nobody would want to sit through it. So what is the purpose of these K three literacy universal screening assessments? You know, the statute ten dash fourteen T of our of our Connecticut general statutes actually spells that out. It not only outlines the specific areas that need to be assessed, like phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, et cetera. It also says that these assessments must help identify those below proficiency in reading in those early years of reading development, when children are learning to read, and to assist in identifying students at risk, at risk of dyslexia or other reading disabilities. Not to make a diagnosis of dyslexia, but to identify those who are at risk of dyslexia or other reading disabilities. So these assessments are called universal screeners, which by definition is universal, meaning that you give it to all students in those formative grades. And it's a screener. What's a screener? It's sort of like a SIP. And so you're you're giving it to everybody, and then you're trying to identify the subset of those students who are at greater risk of dyslexia or other reading disabilities. So I lead the performance office. We were charged with this work uh a little over a year ago. We have a lot of background in this area in terms of assessment. We do obviously a lot of the student assessment work. Um, and when we were assigned this, we said, you know what, let's get an independent review. And that's where Dr. Coyne and Dr. Truckenmiller came in. So now I'm actually gonna turn it over to uh Dr. Truckenmiller to, she has a few slides just to ground us, but also give us her findings from the review of the assessments. So for those of uh members on this side, if you don't, if I know it's a, we we don't project on that side, so appreciate your brief indulgence. So Dr. Trump and I, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Ajit, and thanks to uh Mike for this opportunity to really go in depth and um be able to really understand all of the eccentricities of the assessments that are out there. Uh, so as Ajit pointed out, something that we're uh is very, very important is making sure that we're using the assessment for its intended purpose and that there is evidence to support using those assessments for those intended purposes. And so on this slide, um over on the left, you can see uh what we think about when we're doing universal screening. So we have all students in a school, and we want to identify those students who um with the enacted curriculum that we currently have, who is likely to be below proficiency at the end of the school year so that we can provide effective, evidence-based reading instruction to them so that we can accelerate their development in reading. And so we need an assessment at that point to do that. Um, as he pointed out, you know, this group of students will have students who are at risk for reading proficiency by the end of the year, and it will also have some students with reading disabilities such as dyslexia. And that's represented by this one red person here in this graph. Um, and then after intervention and then potentially after a more um in-depth um evaluation, that's when um reading disabilities like dyslexia are identified. And so we we want to do this, the key thing is not the assessment piece. The key thing um for using early reading assessment is so that we can provide that intervention early enough to prevent later difficulties. And we know that when um we've seen from multiple research studies that when that intervention, reading intervention is provided, the effect sizes of those interventions are two to three times the effects that we can have later on in school. Doesn't mean we shouldn't do intervention later in school. It just means that um we can prevent a lot of frustration if we do that early on. And then a a again, like, a lot of these interventions will be effective for many students with dyslexia. Um, but then there are students with dyslexia and other reading intervention or reading uh disabilities that will require more intensive intervention that we might provide um within special education or um within uh more intensive tier-three intervention. So um we were, a team of us were um asked and commissioned to take a really deep, deep dive into uh lots of correlation tables and pour through technical manuals. Um, so like Ajit, I'm grateful to have a a big team that included uh Dr. Coyne um and then three uh, two former graduate students of mine and a current graduate student, uh Dr. Katie Valentine, Pam Mora, and Dr. Cher Sarmiento worked on this. So what we did was um we thoroughly uh went through using the National Center for Intensive Intervention Criteria. Uh, this is what most states use and um is well established as having high rigor of criteria to use. And it included things like classification accuracy, reliability, evidence of validity, specifically to the components that uh Ajit mentioned that are in Connecticut statute. Also looked at bias analyses and norming samples. Um, two of the areas that we wanted to clarify in the the technical adequacy um criteria was um some places where that criteria wasn't really differentiating uh assessments from each other, the commercial reading assessments that are out there. And so what we wanted to do is make sure it was detecting all of the students in Connecticut uh who indeed needed that additional reading instruction, especially in kindergarten through second grade. And um one of the, one of the um perennial difficulties we've had in the past is in kindergarten through second grade where there is no uh state test. Um, there hasn't been a agreed-upon outcome measure in the, at the end of kindergarten's first and second grade um that actually detects the reading development of um students who are early in their reading development and are still developing their decoding abilities. And so these assessments um weren't necessarily identified as measuring decoding difficulties. So we wanted to make sure that um when we were reviewing the screen, universal screening measures, that they were actually predicting to proficiency at the end of kindergarten, first and second grade in something that detected decoding difficulties. So that's something that was a little bit different and differentiated our results. Um, another piece that was really um interesting and exciting to see in Connecticut is that uh many schools were very interested in using Spanish assessments alongside of the English reading screening assessments because they wanted to show the strengths of their multilingual learners and um think about those students' development in Spanish literacy. So uh because this is a different purpose than the the main purpose of reading screening, we wanted to just take a look at the technical adequacy of the Spanish measures, and we're providing that information as a supplementary just description of the strengths and weaknesses of each of those assessments. So what did we think about and where do we find some differentiation in our findings? Um, I'll refer you to the report that um is attached um that has a lot more details on all of these pieces. Um, but some of the the main findings were um particularly around these kindergarten, first and second grade um reading screening suites. Um, a lot of, we have this long history in assessment that we didn't really take a look that early on. And so a lot of the um the prior work that that's been done, it's taken a lot of time to move assessment to actually be more sensitive in those early grade levels. So we were kind of dealing with that history. Um, and then, as I mentioned, the N C I I criteria that most people have been using, um, they just accepted any measure of reading as an outcome measure, as an end-of-year proficiency measure for kindergarten, first and second grade. And so a lot of these um things, a lot of these end-of-year assessments that the reading suites were predicting to were not picking up on some of the reading difficulties. And the biggest one was there was two reading screening suites that predicted to end-of-year performance on the N W E A MAP growth assessment as the end-of-year measure. And we could not find any evidence in our review that um N W E A MAP growth actually detected word decoding difficulties, which is a primary concern, especially for kids with dyslexia. And so we provide some evidence, uh further evidence in that report. One thing that I'll point out is that um that N W E A MAP growth at the end of kindergarten, first and second grade um was only detecting thirty-three percent of students who were in the lowest tenth percentile at the end of grade kindergarten. And it was only detecting about seventy-seven percent of the students who perform in the lowest tenth percentile in first grade. So we're missing this key demographic of um kids that really want to be, we really, we really want to catch. And so when the reading screeners are predicting to that, their cut points are being set to predict that end-of-year measure and might be missing a lot of kids. Also, we had the opportunity to take a look at why this is happening. And so um this has been research that I've been involved with and Dr. Coyne has been involved with, where we find that the reason for this is that reading is different in grades kindergarten through three than it is in later grades. And so instead of um what has been done in the past, which is taking reading comprehension in late elementary grades and scaling it down to see what it would look like in kindergarten, first and second grade. Instead of doing that, what we found in research is that we really need to model reading development um from pre-kindergarten and kindergarten up. Um, and that gives us better ideas of what we should be measuring. The uh the two assessments that we found that we are differentiating from the other ones, um, they look like they're measuring the right thing. So they might um eventually have studies that show that these um that these assessments are fine to use. Um, but they just don't have any current correlational evidence with external measures of those areas that Connecticut is really interested in, like phonics, phonemic awareness, fluency, and vocabulary. Um, so uh we think that, you know, in the future, those additional assessments um will will likely meet uh good criteria, but currently their cut points aren't set and they don't have um the external evidence that we would like to see. Also, for schools and people to think about is um that we have uh a lot of the assessments already used in Connecticut, uh like the Dible's Eighth are very, very good at measuring decoding. Um, but we're just starting to get better at measuring language comprehension or vocabulary uh as well as the decoding. And we will want to encourage schools to think about um ensuring that they're looking at language comprehension development because um there's another very common reading disability called developmental language disability, and it's just as common as dyslexia. So we want to pick up those kids as well. There's also been um kind of a myth or uh new considerations when thinking about um what features of assessment are really important. A lot of, Connecticut has been really great about um not using the computer adaptive assessments that haven't been very sensitive in early grade levels. Um, but there's newer computer adaptive assessments that are that are doing better. And um it's not the computer nature of the assessment that's that's making it not pick up kids. Um, rather, it's the content of that assessment. And it's important to think about um the potential strengths of computer assessment as a complement to um what Connecticut has been using, which are C B Ms, curriculum-based measurements. So like Dible's Eighth is a curriculum-based measurement, Easy C B M is a curriculum-based measurement, um Ames Web, Fast Bridge. These are all Akadience, these are all curriculum-based measurements that pick up decoding really well. And they tend to do that better than computer adaptive assessments, which is why people. And they tend to do that better than computer adaptive assessments, which is why people have had this um have very rightly so avoided some of the older computer adaptive assessments. Um but one really important consideration is that computer adaptive assessment actually can uh can and does measure vocabulary a little bit better than um this, the curriculum-based measurement technology. So um that's, that's something to think about moving forward. Okay, so what does that mean? All of these um considerations and thoughts went into uh what our recommendations were for the eight assessments suites that we reviewed um to see which ones had good evidence of technical adequacy and which ones did not. And these are just a couple of the recommendations that we provided in the report. There's ten total recommendations in the report for you to look closer at. Um but overall, out of the eight that we reviewed, uh we found that the most popular assessments that are used in Connecticut uh meet technical adequacy standards that we reviewed for. So this includes Dibbles Eighth with M-Class. And so Dibbles Eighth is an update of Dibbles Sixth. Um and it's a pretty significant update from Dibbles Sixth that uh we recommend um moving from Dibbles Sixth up to Dibbles Eighth because of the the improvements. And also now that it's packaged with M-Class to provide that vocabulary measure, uh we think will provide a much um richer eh uh profile of where kids are at. So EasyCBM, Ames Web and Akadience are all um CBM measures that continue to show adequacy. Um school districts had also requested that we review FastBridge, iReady and NWA MAP Fluency. NWA MAP Fluency not to be confused with MAP Growth, which I had talked about earlier. Um MAP Fluency um measures, um some of these CBM measures a little bit uh includes these CBM-like measures. So anyway, um FastBridge is a CBM-like measure and it shows evidence of technical adequacy. iReady is a computer adaptive that also has CBM-type measures in it and um show technical adequacy as well. Previously, um there was uh Amira was on the previous list. And um Amira had all of those um face validity things that we want to see. It looks like it measures phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary, um oral language has a really, actually has one of the best oral language measures because they actually show evidence of validity of their oral language me- measure on Amira. However, their overall cut score was predicting in kindergarten first and second grade to the NWA MAP Growth Assessment at the end of the year. And so we don't know if it's actually detecting all of the kids who need those um decoding interventions. And so that's what uh led to our conclusion that it doesn't currently have all of the evidence it needs. They would just need to conduct another study to provide that external validity evidence. And then NWA MAP Fluency was a new one that we were asked to review. Um and that also only predicted out to the NWA MAP Growth outcome in kindergarten first and second grade. So um that was our conclusion for those eight assessments. Again, I'll refer you to the report for the other conclusions. And um I'll turn it back over to Ajit or to anybody for questions.
So thank you, uh Dr. Franklin Miller. That was excellent. I think uh you see the key point here is that those early measures you should predict to decoding measures, if they have to be sensitive enough to identifying that screening, the students who are at risk, very likely of having those disabilities. So thank you, Dr. Truck and Miller. That was, that was excellent summary. So what are we recommending basically? Pretty much what she said, which is that uh we are recommending the removal of Dibbles Sixth. Validated, whether there is a newer measure, so we'll only be that. We are also recommending that Amira learning not remain on the menu for the reasons cited. Um the iReady early literacy screening does have technical adequacy. Uh it was requested by one district, Stanford Public Schools. So we're not recommending it be added to the menu at this point, but we are asking for permission to conduct a pilot at Stanford Public Schools. So that we can actually work with this assessment, understand all the subtests a little better, and then track that over a few years with Stanford to see how it works. Um they are currently double testing with both iReady literacy screening and Dibbles. So we're sort of work, gonna work with them to figure out how best, you know, how the the new assessment might work in their district. Only in that one district. Um we are also proposing in the packet, you will see that we're also proposing that the department collect data from all districts on these K three assessments. Um and I think uh it's not just an exercise in data collection. Um we have many, many purposes for this collection, one of which would be to really analyze the efficacy of these assessments. Because while these assessments, as presented to the researchers, have the requisite technical adequacy, we actually don't know how they are behaving in Connecticut. So we really need to collect the data and study how do they relate to third grade proficiency on smarter balance and really even beyond. Um so we need to do that. We need to look at the profiles of the students who are in our districts. What sort of profiles do these assessments tell us about? Who are the students in our schools and what sort of reading interventions might best support them? So we need to study that. We have an early indication tool that we provide to districts through EdSight Care. This would be a a part of that. And when students move from one district to another, obviously the data can move with them. So and reduce the testing time when students move. Uh you know, when we uh and I'll be close by saying basically that we've been at this for the last year plus. We talked to numerous districts. Um there are lots of misconceptions out there that we've been working with our colleagues and the other academic and talent offices to try to sort of continue to dispel. Some people think, even with our current law, that they should only assess the students three times a year if in the fall assessment in kindergarten, they have some, they're have some difficulty based on the measure. No, no, no. You have to assess all students three times a year on the appropriate subtest. Because this is the early developmental phases and it's important to screen, screen, a universal screen three times a year. That is important. Um sometimes these results aren't shared with parents. We've heard that. We've heard from parents directly. So we're gonna be working with districts really to provide the professional earnings towards all of that to make sure that this information actually reaches parents as well. So we don't want this to be a compliance exercise with our districts or with ourselves. So we're doing it for the right reasons and really it was great to pivot uh to piggyback off of uh Melissa's presentation, which which uh you know, we're really here in alignment with that work uh to support that work. So that really concludes my presentation. I really thank you, Commissioner, for shepherding us through this process over the past year and I, we will pause and pay any questions.
Ajit, I do have it quick and I'll open up to the board. Um for the districts, um directs the CSTD, that very first one, the assist districts currently using Dibbles Sixth. Do we have a, an idea of how many districts that is?
Yeah, so are, we did a survey in April of last year, so a little over a year ago. And we had a handful of districts that indicated that we're doing Dibbles Sixth. We had a handful of districts that indicated that we're using Amira learning. Uh we've actually contacted all of those districts. And uh a few of the districts that indicated Dibbles Sixth on the survey said that was a mistake. They meant something else. We clarified that. We gave them a heads up and they were totally fine with that. We actually reached out to the districts that had indicated Amira as well. And two of the districts that indicated Amira had actually switched over to Dibbles already. Um and the third one was, was also fine with you know, figuring out what, and if they need any assistance, support, whatever, we'll work with them on it. Um either not many districts that we know of and uh so happy to all
So that a large group that is
No, it's not. Uh three quarters of our districts are using Dibbles. Um and Dibbles has two versions. There's the M-Class version that uh Dr. Truck and Miller talked about that includes the vocabulary. There are some districts we think that are doing it on paper. There's, there's a paper version is both free, you can just print out, use the forms. But that actually does not include the vocabulary measure. That only comes, comes the M-Class online version. So we really, again, wanna like, we're actually, we've got a survey slated to go tomorrow. To really figure out like who's using the paper, who's using the M-class version on amplified platform, who's using Ames Web.
That's a data that you'll be finishing collecting.
Yes, yes.
Questions or comments from board?
Summermin? Yeah, uh thank you, thank you Ajit. Thank you to Dr. Zokoy and uh Dr. Miller for the detailed report. Uh as I, I Thank you all. Everybody for being here. I um Uh so I appreciate the report, appreciated reading for, I I, you know, after reading it, I felt uh, you know, confident that we that our due diligence at selecting uh measures that are assigned to be validated. Um you know, I felt uh confident and you, you feel a little bit better even about some of the measures that you're recommending we not use in the sense that these things seem like they might be okay in terms of additional validation. So I felt better about the state of of validation after reading this. I think Ajit, your point you made at the end about how this is uh really something that Ajit that in conjunction with Dr. Iggy, which is really the main thing, main comment I have for you guys. So I'm confident we've done a great job selecting assessments. I'm pretty confident that we are making great progress and sort of rolling them out with, you know, on the basis of uh Melissa's discussion. And I am really happy to hear about the data collection effort uh for reading assessment in lower grades that's our embarking on. I guess I'm looking forward to seeing what that shows. But what we're just doing, if it's possible, in terms of maintaining these records, is thinking a little bit about retrospective data collection as well, being a challenge. You know, you get maybe to say, hey, you know, it seems like it's related to reading fluency later, for example. But ultimately, what we would like to know is to confirm that succeed in say raising the performance of kindergarteners relative to what's happened before. So to the extent that it's possible, I would encourage me to ask for whatever they were whatever they were collecting along these dimensions for kindergarten. They receive indicators um from before, potentially they adopted some of the the new policies that that Dr. Iggy was describing. Anyways, that would be my suggestion going forward. I'm I'm looking forward to see uh what we can learn.
Thank you, thank you for that point. We agree that we are looking at doing some modeling with this data to identify those profiles of students. And um we are hoping to not have to collect this from the districts, but instead uh get the data directly from the vendors. That's even better. Um it's actually a little messier, but we take on the burden of the work when we do that. Um but we think that will actually be a better thing. And then we can ask the vendors, at least we're in that conversation, for yeah, the retrospective data as well. Exactly. So I mean the um, so yeah, so that is definitely part of of the plan.
Yes. Oh, thank you for this information and then, and again, for the consistency that we're having in the reading and the data collection. Uh my question is, as you well know, it's multilingual learners. And uh the thing is, uh research is very clear that it takes three years to acquire language, eight years to learn. And testing in lower grades, how is that going to um? How are you gonna look at that data um of students? And also we have long-term English language learners in our schools. Um so how are you gonna be profiling that, those students in in the data?
So um nothing, uh well, personally, English learners obviously are part of, part of our system. We know who they are. Uh we know how long they have been in in public schools. And we have longitudinal information about them. Um this K three information is really critical because while we may have the English language proficiency assessment, the last links, we don't actually have reading developmental information from such screeners. Uh we haven't talked about the Spanish language assessments that, as Dr. Truck and Miller mentioned, that's a supplemental assessment. Um but we haven't talked about collecting that, but maybe that's something that we can talk about and see how um backgrounds of students on the English language version of these assessments, which is used for identifying uh risk of, you know, how does that comport with a Spanish language version? I mean, about three quarters of our, of our multilingual learners are Spanish speaking, so we can kind of look at that. Um and uh and of course, the one, if they're English learners, then we absolutely will have the last links information. So unlike the uh native speakers who we will have to work, wait till third grade for a measure, we will have actually last assessment on the four domains, uh reading, writing, listening and speaking uh in English for those students. So I think we may have more information on our English learners that we can potentially use to study their progress in these early.
And that's it. Thank you. And that's a good point. It's just, you know, language acquisition is not a linear factor, as you know. It's, it goes up and it goes down. So I just wanna make sure that we keep in mind that, you know, that vision.
Absolutely. And uh we will be, I'm sure the commu- the commissioner will ask us to keep the board apprised at frequent intervals. So suspect once we have data, we'll be back here.
Questions?
Uh it is just a comment and to thank uh Performance Office, and I know they're, they can weigh us because I know Performance Officers are are in the audience there. And he'd always like to say, remind us that he may be the face on some of this, putting a lot of hard work with his staff, but the commitment to do this, uh as Ajit mentioned a year ago, when I said I'm transitioning this work to the Performance Office, uh it wasn't, and he kind of looked at me at the time and said, oh, okay. Uh but it was, as you can see, necessary to do this and to have the external um researchers doing this work uh and support the decisions we need to make. I thought was really important. So it took us a little longer to get here. Uh but we do thank you for that, uh for the work that you've done and also for the engagement of the board around this and will continue to keep you apprised of what is, while we continue to support our districts as you hear. There is still a lot of support. And Dr. Zimmerman talked about the cross-collaboration between performance and our academic office and the reading center. It is all, everyone working together. So, and I can tell you, I said this to Ajit a lot and for people who don't know, I talked to a lot of other state agencies where the data piece, people are kind of worn off. And and they don't, you know, collaborate across the 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 agency. But I can tell you that the Performance Office is in the midst of all the programmatic work. So we don't collect this data just to have data available. It's for a purpose and this continual back and forth uh across the agency and doing this work. So there's no silo. It truly is one agency around this. And nothing can be more important when we talk about early literacy and making sure that our students are are literate. Uh really a foundation to the work that we do. So I just wanna thank you all.
We're ready to vote. Um all in favor, revise menu, create grades K through the universal screening assessments? I post. First, thank you. As I'm looking at the agenda too, is there anything on the consent, consent agenda that board members wanted? Do I have a motion then to approve the consent agenda um for item nine?
Moved.
We're good.
All in favor? I, I, I post. There is. And I have one more request. We're trying to take, if I can have a moment please, to move item eleven A. The Parker Public Schools operations are updating. We're gonna have a motion to move that.
Moved.
One second.
That would, Chris, yes.
Yeah. Oh, you know, yeah, I can hear you guys.
Good morning, good morning. On U V three hundred four, first lines of section ten dash three through three, meeting two of Connecticut General Section, the State Board of Education. Directed by the Ministry of Education to take the necessary action to implement on behalf of the State Board of Education. The power set forth in sections ten dash two to three, ensure the fiscal operations of Harvard Public Schools. This included a brief program approach, including magnetry assessments, optimizing funds utilization, special education services assessment. And improvements of financial systems. Immediate action was taken taken in partnering with the State Education Resource Center and ultimately engaged with new solutions K twelve. To facilitate a comprehensive special education review with a focus on H P S staffing improvement or retention practices. Based for specific environments, programming and the placement process resulting in students being placed in other districts special education programs. New solutions K twelve presented its preliminary findings to all of you. On January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and the commissioner had provided that as the State Board of Education was regular of the. New solutions K twelve has continued its review with published findings and recommendations in the final report, which is attached in the following packet this morning. Uh, for the review. State Board of Education. We also have Nate Levinson, President of New Solutions K twelve, to present all to all of you these findings. As well as the Director of Special Education, Ryan Tinkley, who is also going to discuss our next steps as a department.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Appreciate the opportunity to hear what we learned. Today's reflectors work. I'll move briefly and we answer your questions. I think the most important thing to know about the workload that led us to our finding. Uh, we have conducted hundreds of similar studies across the country and weighted the process viewed was very inclusive. We made. Out to uh more than a hundred and thirty folks within the district, was getting a great deal of data. I went back multiple times to get more additional data was needed, we even find it discussed it with folks within the district. Uh, visiting classrooms and at the end of the day, we believe we have a comprehensive and realistic assessment of the current state. And so I'd be happy to share with you all of your part, but there's not the process. I think one of the most important pieces, I want to share one of our most important findings. Is how interconnected the challenges are. And I said that because in some cases we found in the district where you could tackle one thief or another thief. That ends to some problems. Here our tend to is is a great deal with interconnectedness. Uh, do their challenges and address just one or two that may not be sufficient. That is not always the case. Uh, so the five interconnected challenges solved. First, there's widespread staffing shortage of educators and. Also our educators. At the time of the latest update of this report in mid February, there is a forty seven. Special education teacher vacancies for history to have been some more. Um, burden some vacancies, uh, speech and language vacancies, about twelve and a half FTE, again, a very significant number. Um, so we'll start with there aren't enough teachers um to provide all dozens intended, all dozens provided. Uh, what complicates that shortage is that we also found when we're in terms of limited general education support. Meaning that for students who were struggling academically. Um, it causes were not as many as we typically see opportunities to support those through the speed general education. It creates a culture and perhaps even a reasonable effort to help them. But that says more kids would be able to urge special education because there weren't general education options available. That just increases the load on special educators in your work work supply of. Um, we also saw a high number of out of district replacements and how you serve through the most immediate needs. All districts will have some uh staffing for internal options. Uh, is more staff intensive than. Uh, other types of special education services. So as you have a shortage of staff. It almost becomes the logical step to hit the most out of the staff you have. So we've actually seen. As well, the district budgeted to expand. The number of options in district. They've actually had to reduce the number of options in districts because of the staffing. Um, the fourth is interconnectedness is the limited special education support. Um, many years ago, and certainly way before our study, a number of decisions were made on how best to support students with special needs. And it did lead to a reduction in some of the most common ways in treating the modern disabilities are supported. Um, which incurred because those intermediate kind of supports aren't available. It actually led to a greater use of more significant supports for students with special needs, which are again more staff intensive. Which only exactorages the staffing shortages further. Um, and lastly, as we know and we discussed and I've discussed before, uh, students uh living in Hartford have a choice. Do is head to others uh school district. Uh, students who have taken advantage of that. Um, the district, the Hartford district covers the potential task of meeting your special needs. Because of the staff shortage, um, the Hartford Public Schools has not been particularly more engaged in those IDP meetings or. As part of the evaluation or determination process. Which is um, perhaps what I did statistically, we know that kids in those um open choice schools have a much higher rate. Of special education identification. Um, high level services, what we do not know is beyond the scope of what Freddy is whether it's kids with disabilities or not. Like in a hot individual choice or when they opt in. The open choice, the receiving districts will more find to um, put it into special education. But all of these, um, I don't. Continue to feed into each other. And I think perhaps one of the most important takeaway is. Element and it's poor though, the fact that the uh general education offering for tier one instruction. But general education, tier two and tier three interventions. If those are lacking. Um, that in any district will create a broken special education. Uh, which will just continue to uh put pressure on the staffing. Special education. So I know this was a special education review. And the special education review, but I'm going to make sure folks do not miss a key point that changes his general education. In order to important uh element. In improving the situation for kids with special needs. And interestingly, improving general education will also be an important element of addressing the special education backlog shortage. Because if general education proves the lack of these, that need um for all those very large. But how does this power that interconnectedness? Um, also want to take a moment and then celebrate some good things that are going on as a former superintendent. I know that food group never gets enough attention and I want to. Uh, highlight uh six commendations. Uh, first, with the district staff incredibly dedicated, better facilities, features, cares need to run up in both shoes. Um, they are feeling the pressure for sure, but they are both special teachers and general teachers for working incredibly hard. There's also a very strong sense of pride in the community and the district um from staff leadership. We met so many folks. Uh, loved in Hartford, went to the Hartford Public Schools, are proud to be part of the Hartford Public School. Um, again, I know it's your challenges, but there's a real pride and that is your great strength in the district. I want to acknowledge that the district has in recent years tackled a little bit of disorder with a high number of high school replacements. Uh, the students spending the Hartford Public Schools, those numbers have improved over the last few years. And it was our sense that it would probably improve even further. I had a staffing shortage because I've not gotten away with that. I want to acknowledge and appreciate that district leadership is fully aware of many of these challenges. And have started to take some important steps, particularly around um trying to improve and for instruction and trying to take steps. These three, you know, two and three before the students, before they uh enter a special education. Acknowledge those are relatively early on in the process, but it was nice to see that they had already started to look at one of these issues we thought was so important in the district. Uh, the district has created a continuing services for treatment for those with disabilities. Um. Uh, again, the challenge staffing has made it, uh, those numbers shrink or expand was their plan, but the offerings it did have. See many of them aligned to best practices. Uh, so we want to acknowledge that while quantity may not be theirs. Number here is program are well well designed. And lastly, wanted to know, and this is both a combination, but also you'll see uh potentially a challenge that the district has a wide range of school types. Figurations for magnet schools, the big leagues, a lot of variation in choices for parents, we should rate. It will also uh complicate as time is rolling out some of the changes. But certainly, uh, the new word celebrating and moving the mature accommodations we're sharing. Uh, we uh boiled down um our sense of how this one moving forward, I didn't hear your connectedness and what we heard. Um, it's this opportunities. Uh, the first is to address the vacant shoes through an updated set of hiring strategies. I want to take a a minute or two to talk about this one. All school districts are starting with uh special education. That it's a national problem, state problem, and consistent with the pandemic, it gets worse. Um, but it is our sense that where the Hartford Public Schools are today, that. Branches that might be sufficient in other places. Probably will not be sufficient in part. The reason for that is, one, uh, there is a pay gap. I know there's recent contract has helped shrink that pay gap, but it is also our sense that even if there was no pay gap. There was still need to go beyond the average. Uh, one is that their staffing shortages are well known. Which means if I, if there are forty seven vacancies, then I become one of those who are tired and they're not forty six vacancies. Well, that still means I as a new special educator will have more on my plate here than in other places. What we heard and seen is that the special educators are trying valuably. To meet the needs of all students, but they are running up compensatory service requirements, they are ordering orders, they are hours. Um, e- even if the pay were the same, I am going to have more to do because there are a few of us to get it all done. Um, so what we're, our sense is when we use the phrase an updated set of hiring strategies is. We look at, for example, redesigning the job, allowing special educators to specialize. This is a trend that is starting to bloom across country. We are seeing districts that do that. Uh, addressing far more candidate and far more candidates for comfort jobs to accept the jobs, including. Accepting jobs as low as haze because the quality of work like is so much better. Uh, we are seeing a growing number of districts utilize part of our staff, often retired teachers for folks raising families or folks. Former teachers who left the profession to raise families or look after aging parents. There's been growing people who have not worked a full match out. And they're not. Um, often there are not a lot of school districts yet offering that, but those who have, but have been abandoned, they're attracting them, they're paying them. Uh, we've seen growing evidence across the country that. Army enrolled college students make highly effective consumers if they're majoring in subjects they are tutoring. And that can be part of the workforce for serving students, highly effective and that's become entirely new. Uh, you know, the world of rural work, I think that somebody runs the Albia is a hundred percent rural. Um. Many positions in the public education cannot lend themselves to rural work. But it does turn out that a number of aspects in special education, managing I T meetings, speech therapy services, counseling services. Not all special education communities are known, but some elements of it could use, and that is an option to consider. We are seeing the best practices all for um, we know content strong teachers will serve students with disabilities. And many, I'd love to hear an update on your literacy efforts. You can imagine a world in which. Um, if you are short on special educators, having general education, you highly skilled reading teacher providing I U P services is allowed by I D A. And then expands the pool of highly skilled folks to drop on. Uh, the para educator shortages is challenging and it's stressful and certified in that. Uh. The district has a self imploded and fairly uncommon expectation that our educators have a philosophy degree. They have relaxed that by saying, hey, we will hire you without that degree, so learn some new that degree. Uh, it's an option and not typically reverse choice, but give them the same stacking shortages and maybe you need their passion. So a number of options, you can see there's not a shortage of options, but all of them are fairly non traditional, many of them are fairly priority. Um, not many of them are widely viewed um color in the district. Uh, second opportunity is, as we said, really increasing retention and improving the attractiveness of the jobs for special educators. By allowing special educators to play with their strength. Uh, very briefly, the role of a special educator. Is a role to carry any person in a public school. They're asked to teach multiple subjects, they're asked to know the law, to do behavior support, learn to manage I U Ps, learn to manage I U Ps. Based on their disabilities. Um, very few folk are actually expert in all of that. I say that we we've interviewed. Uh, special educators in different countries. Um, part of the reason here is the shortage is the work is incredibly hard. Uh, we are seeing a growing number of districts, often pushed by their own staff, allow special educators to specialize. Again, excellent for students and also very strong for recruiting integrated staff. Um, there's a need, opportunity number three, to continue and accelerate efforts to implement that strong law curriculum. And appropriate tier one, two and three supporters for students in trouble. And recognizing that that M P S R T I those tier two and three supports are appropriate for students with non modern disabilities as well. We really want to see a world in which kids are struggling, even if they have an I U P, are actively represented and supported. Uh, through highly effective core instruction plus uh effective intervention. Uh, this again raises achievement, but it also reduces the search for on special education, giving evil and all things supporting students. Uh, one of the challenges in any district is difficult. It will be a little more difficult in the Hartford Public Schools when we work for the teachers and some staff. Uh, is a general sense that. Their buildings are unique. I did point out that there is a very wide range of types of schools there. We heard from principals and staff, they have allegiances to their school and a connection in the district as a whole. I see a few head sightings, I'm not telling you something you don't know, but I do want to point out that we have studied hundreds and hundreds of districts. It is extraordinarily difficult. I will say it almost never happens. And you can roll out a strong core instruction and roll out effective intervention in M T S S. As for B I, it's a college year, at a school by school by school by school effort. It's too complicated. People who've done this and done this well has been done as a district initiative. Uh, with great communication and great support and it is, I don't believe there's a history of district wide movement. And a also a present. And also a precedent for, thinking at a school level, by school staff, rather than a district level. That will add a very complexity to making opportunity three come to life. Opportunities or security is a backlog through raised achievement. It's with and without disabilities. Option number four, opportunity number four, I mentioned that. There is a good range of specialized programs to the district. But we also see quite a few students, thirty eight percent of the students move opted into open choice, have a disability. Again, beyond the scope of the work, but there is certainly a lot of folks believing. And I think might be worthwhile study for future, our, our families with kids who will carry their needs leaving the district. One of the strategies for having a school system that has internal programs, deep families in the district. Is to plan and partner with outside agencies. Let me give you an example, we work in one district that partnered with a national autism unit. To help design and manage in school, in district program. So it is still part of the teachers in this case. But all the expertise and the association with a very well established, very well respected organization helps give parents. Confidence in this program they would want with children to attend. As we've mentioned, we've got Harvard, that's a few thousand students attending open choice schools. More than a percentage of them, these needs, who's in need for those services. But currently has no other legislation to put forward to give Harvard. A much greater role in determination of those IUPs. But even under the card system, they have a right to attend those meetings, to weigh in. Because of the stat shortages, they have not. It's very uncertain, they do attend magnet school PPT, but they do not attend open choice schools. And our sense here is create a specialized team, perhaps of higher third party folks, or sort of highly experienced special educators. To end those meetings. But that also says we need strong, regular management of that team, but it seems that. In this opportunity, and I can understand if you are short on stat, you have to make some choices. This is certainly a very costly proposition of during the provide. And to all of this, if we looked at numbers one, two, three, four and five, what we've said is, well, this is a lot of work. And the sense that often having those in other places before, people will look through the pen and look at a special education. Say, oh, fourth, and you look through five. Those folks have a really full plate. Much of these opportunities are somewhat untraditional. There's not even a reason to believe that any sitting special director may have a lot of experience in helping special educators play to their strength. Negotiating contracts with certain parties. The expertise to roll out large scale initiatives across a different school system that has had not a lot of experience with that. We wanted to make a point, I think number six. That small number of highly skilled project and program manager. A real focus on implementation, location and monitoring. Success of the implementation of gathering feedback and adjusting in the real time with a very specific set of skills. And aligning with those set of skills, we think is going to be necessary. So I do want to end this to say that. We believe the first five opportunities are very powerful. Not be fully honest to say that they are easy to implement, we wish we had an easier list. And making sure that folks with a wide range of skills, it's going to be very important to oversee that information. Where do we go from here? We remember that the SPE is going to further assess the impact of the staffing vacancies. Some of the comments in the report, staff feeling, challenging to meet all the IUP services. Certainly, statutory services have had problems. And I know there's a one that need to understand exactly the impact of the shortage in that regard. We think the district and others need to help prioritize these opportunities and really creating a very detailed plan for implementation. I don't want to say it too many times, but this is a complex implementation, but it is necessary. To that end, we think partners of outside organizations or multiple organizations helps support the engagement of these opportunities. Would be worthwhile. Then ultimately, this work needs to both in short term and long term, be built into the district strategic plans. For operating, defensive progress monitoring, feedback. This is a multi-year effort report. On the back, I appreciate your questions.
Thank you for that comprehensive report. I'm not sure, I saw it anywhere in here. The Board of Education, which obviously plays a large role in the school system. I mean, your report focuses on the school itself, the superintendent down. And I don't want to get too deep in this, but I've been around the block a few times, the Harvard School System. Their Board of Education, the mayor, was the mayor involved in? Because the mayor appointed more than half of the boards. So he is the controller. And is that affecting anything?
Here's how I would think about it. I spent six years on a school board. The challenges that the district is faced, staffing shortages, again, school boards decide budget. Well, the district has budgeted for all these positions. You know, school boards certainly do not get involved in the detail of what the program in is. But I think these challenges comes from multiple years, certainly. There were decisions made a number of years ago, again, not a more than a decision, but some approaches to how best to serve students with special needs. Who's blue, certainly the common means which districts serve students with special needs. I think that started to lead to need for more staff. And the staff also took a, I would say, a focus off of core instruction and education intervention. But you are far more knowledgeable in the word than I am. I would say it's not feel like it's challenges created by the board. Certainly, the board plays a very important role in setting priorities for the district. To be different viewed as a special ed review and delegated off to special education. That it will not, this has to be a different party. This is a, at a top level, I thought, the board is not everything has been received. So that there's certainly a role for guardians, parties, our extension.
I hear what you're saying, it's just, you know, with Harvard is bound by their charter. And that's the way their charter is developed. That board is. You know, the. But you know, we all have to work this together. And he should be, the mayor needs to be a part of this, this plan. Got to buy into the plan, because he, again, he appoints over half of the board. Whatever the number is, I think their number is eleven board members or nine board members. And if it's nine, the mayor appoints five. And not to say that anybody is bad, but they're, they're coming from two different ways. The others are elected by the people. The people have nothing to say about over half of the board. And I think that's important, but that requires probably. Against, I don't, I don't.
Maybe I'll just add, I know other board members went to the point, Mr. Harris is making, is that we've made sure we've kept very close contact with the mayor. Around all of the reporting, he's, Norton has been the head of all of what we're doing in Hartford. And has constant contact with, with the mayor's office. So the mayor's office is aware of all the presentations to date, what we're finding, and so that, hopefully that helps.
Yes, it does. Yeah. He's a good man, yes.
Just wanting to follow up, I think it's great that the mayor is continually updated. I guess my question is, thank you for the report, the seriousness of the report. I would encourage that, I mean, is this something that this presentation can be made to the school board in Hartford? And the presentation be made to Hartford Common Council? So I think it's wonderful that the mayor is surprised and the superintendent and team. But to Mr. Harris's point, there's a governing body there. And that governing body also has a strong connection to the mayor, connection to the common council, particularly in terms of.
Continue that part of the conversation, and then I have a not related at all to the Board of Education. I'm struck by on page nineteen, I think, to your point that the recommended next steps is the thing that the district should do. I think the Board of Education has a responsibility on this list. So if we're saying that the district should share this report with their entire leadership team. The district should be sharing it with their Board of Education. The Board of Education certainly has a say in the district's strategic plan. So if the district is updating their strategic plan, the Board of Education needs to be involved in every process. And they have, exactly, they have to buy into that process. And the same thing, if we're talking about the external partners and progress monitoring. That the Board of Education should be asking for monthly updates on what is going on. Exactly like what we see here, where we get a monthly update on what's going on with our teams that are at Bridgeport or in Hartford. I think it would behoove the Harvard Board of Education to request the same types of updates. So to move to a completely different, intentional topic. As a classroom teacher, I'm particularly struck with the repetitiveness of the core instruction that you've talked about. And also the insufficiencies of the MCSS and tier two and tier two, three supports. I don't know the answer to this question, but I'm curious to what extent has Hartford School District, and maybe this is not a question for you, but for the commissioner of the department. Have this, has this district engaged in high dosage tutoring? In school programs for high dosage tutoring or outside of school high dosage tutoring? For me, you sort of tangentially made the point that college students tutoring in their majors are, you know, an untapped. Question or a possibility, and that of course then jumped right into me for thinking about what kind of high dosage in school programs for tutoring are being offered. Or they have not at all taken advantage of the programs in the state that get.
Looking to Dr. Hughes and other team members here that we're directly with, like the Alhaz district and some of the other work that they're doing in district.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, relative to high dosage tutoring, and I would wonder if he is in the room to speak to some of the. Allocations and supports that were provided to the, to the funding, a lot for high dosage tutoring. We have been engaging with the district, particularly, again, a similar strategy that's been used with Bridgeport. But to address the literacy within district and provide intervention, I shouldn't say intervention. Supports the teachers at the tier one level, provide those interventions in schools. So we're working with the district currently, some of those procedures to enhance core instruction.
Construction.
Exactly. Absent the need, as Dana said, to supplement with additional bodies for intervention. So if we can raise that core structure level, be a better outcome for students. Probably even needing less, well, definitely less for tutoring at the.
Yeah, I was just struck by, I want to find on page thirteen about the need for extra instructional time. And talk, you know, particularly, you know, it says content specifics such as math skills, reading comprehension. Rather than just generalized extra help, to me, that just screams high dosage tutoring is needed in these areas.
And a follow up to your question. See, I, I think generally there is a lack of consistency. If I was to put a name to it, I can, in the top of my head, I can name five or six different programs. Of tutoring that are available. But it's for one group or another group, but you know, there's nothing consistent for all of the kids in Hartford. And, you know, I can name Legacy Program, I can name my own church that has sponsored for one school. And, you know, and there are teachers that have worked with students for one school. And, you know, and every turnover and sorority groups. Have gone in, adopted a school, they've gone in and done something, but it's half assed, it's not consistent. Yeah, piecemeal, good one.
About the work, like you mentioned, the work is individual schools or not as an entire district?
If I could just amplify that point a little bit, because it's not just tutoring that you're seeing for example. And we tried to be, you know, didn't want to over generalize in the report. We've made the comment that the use of a strategy called Resource Room, it was common in special education. So it's, I was in many ways based out a number of years ago. But what we've seen is individual schools have brought it back. We saw a need, but as they brought it back, individual schools brought it back in different ways. So even at pre elementary schools, it will look differently, the difference between how it was done in elementary, high school were very different. And to be fair, difference is not going to have itself a bad thing. But I will say that as we looked at the range of what the ways it was brought back. Some of those ways were much, much more aligned to best practices, others not all aligned with best practice. Where our experience has been in districts that have substantially raised achievement. As it is far more, that they do as a district, there's a higher level of consistency. Yes, there's some variation within a range, but certain best practices have to be in every resource. For example, for we prefer it to be a vacuum, there needs to be direct instruction. Kids learn from. That instruction needs to be targeted to the things I did not yet learn. We saw that in many places, but in other places we saw it's computers, self directed. In other places we saw mostly homework. But that was three flavors, something called a resource room. And asked or referred through the strategy and saying, are those flavors yes, two of those flavors no. And so I do think they will need a need for a higher level of consistency. Otherwise you get the appearance of implementation, but what, what might be implemented might not be very effective if, if every school goes off. And the last thing I'll say for any school folks there, this is not a call for a countdown. Highly effective implementation has the voice of teenagers, has the voice of principals in both paving the plan and giving extraordinarily real-time feedback on how things are going. This wanted to note that consistency, it's not the same as top-down, and now sometimes it's heard that way, but it's not what I'm trying to say.
So maybe this is a good time to talk about what's next. Uh, you know, hearing, uh, everything that you've said, uh, it's so specific to special education, but I, I'm also concerned about core instruction. And so that's a conversation that we've had, and you see the team here, so what's next?
Thank you, Christopher. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, so given the findings of the, the report that you all have the opportunity to view and hear a bit about today, I level, uh, in significant concerns around the systemic issues that Hartford has in being able to implement special education consistently and across all students. Uh, the C S D E is taking the following action. We'll be working with the district to support, um, an action plan, given an reason plan based on the findings and the recommendations that you all saw here today. The, um, it's important to note that Hartford Public Schools is in our cohort for this school year for our general supervision and monitoring activities. We have a three-year cohort for districts. So we're already engaged with the district in a number of activities, including I P implementation timelines, for example. Uh, this summer there will be a parent survey, which, uh, aligns with CAR's State Performance Plan Indicator Eight, which asks parents if they feel like meaningful members of the planning and placement team process. That's the core aspect of the program, we're engaged in those activities. Uh, we also engage with them throughout the year on the I D A grant fiscal monitoring. Getting back to the specifics of the recommendations here, uh, we're also, in addition to our, well, uh, tier one monitoring with the district, we're intensifying that support. We'll be conducting onsite audits specifically around the impact of I P implementation and service delivery. Uh, you all identified core instruction as well, so you also, special education is not working in isolation internally, but also externally across a variety of areas. Hartford Public Schools, um, for example, the resistance superintendent curriculum has been involved with the end to end follow-up with the action plan as well. Uh, so we'll continue to take that approach across all levels and all areas. Uh, regarding the vacancies, uh, we've already begun with Hartford, and they've developed a system to be able to identify the impact of the vacancies and reporting to us on a regular basis. May mentioned a few times today that term compensatory services, but essentially, how is the district communicating to their parents? The impact of vacancies, how are they monitoring the student's progress that are, that their services are being impacted? And a plan to be able to address those. And taking creative strategies that were shared today to ensure, uh, less of an impact that's able to be built or, so. I think it's learning buckets were, uh, shared.
I just, and the conversation here is really helpful, uh, in, in terms of your thoughts and input. Uh, because as you know, this is prompt two of a third, right? Uh, the, um, bucket of work that we're doing in Hartford, there's continuing work around, uh, the fiscal operations, and that continues. And now you've gotten the, the, kind of the result of the, the special education piece, and we hear again, core instruction tier one is a part of that. And then we have the magnet piece that is coming, but what you should expect from us is that we're weaving all of this together. And it's not, here's now your fiscal plan, and here's your special ed plan, and here's the, the other plan that you're developing. So it is now for us, across the agency, there's special education, but there's the Alliance District. There is, uh, the talent piece, that all of this comes together, develop a comprehensive plan for follow-up and support of the district in this regard. So that's really where we are, is we're looking individually at the different buckets of work, and that is the charge to the team. So you should expect to get that back from us, uh, as to what it is that we're doing. As you know, public works is to be clear, doing work in the district, having delivered their report and helping them to address those issues that came forward. Similar follow-up will be down here, but we've got to step back, I think, is what I'm hearing everyone say here, which is true, to what is the district's plan, supported by their board, all of that. I know we've met with the members of the Blue Ribbon Commission, because don't forget that has happened in the city as well, and they met with us. Uh, so I'm, I'm sure that we'll be meeting with them again, and the, the chair of the board, if I'm not mistaken, is a part of the Blue Ribbon Commission, to put all this together. So that is, it's comprehensive, and as was said earlier, this is not an easy lift. Uh, but that is the commitment, uh, in the district, when he charged us, uh, we need to take a deeper look at what is happening. So that is really what we're working on.
More questions?
Well, thank you very much. It's not something we have to, now we don't, but it's just. Uh, I'm going to ask the board, you know, we are approaching one o'clock, and we still have, uh, action items that require action, um, which you'd like to break for lunch.
Do you have thoughts?
Again, I'm going to indulge a change, because we do have, um, individuals that need to get back to their classrooms, so we do really like to honor that. Uh, so I'm asking the board to, uh, move items seven, D, and E next.
Good afternoon, and I'd like to share with Senator Whitaker and members. Uh, the Talent Office Bureau of Certification is here to request approval, uh, certification for individuals that are here with us today, Jevon Adote and Tyler Felton. And we also would like for the board to know that we have a rigorous internal process that has been developed, and that the certification consultants conduct a very detailed review of programs, districts, and verification of experience. And that the certification board is aware of this internal process and this public process as well. And we are adhering to our legislative, um, processes. Today I have Dr. Katie Richardi here, who's our unit coordinator, and Ms. Julianne Ross from the Bureau of Certification.
Good afternoon, state board of education members. Mr. Jevon Adote has partially completed an approved educator certification program, but is unable to obtain the institutional recommendation because he did not complete the final year of his internship in Pennsylvania. However, he did do a full year prior, and completed the first year of his program as well. He holds a bachelor's degree in English, a master's degree in education, and he passed an exam of Goldman's two cadet's practice, practice two English content area test. He's currently serving under durational shortage area permit as a secondary English teacher in the New Haven School District. His experience, education, and enthusiastic support from the New Haven School District are within the parameters for obtaining an alternative pathway certification waiver. And the Bureau of Certification strongly supports the issuance of an initial educator certificate.
In reading your report, um, my question's about the twenty school months of successful teaching. I understand that the student teaching identified on page three obviously would not count towards that twenty hours. In your review, is the one year of a fellow from twenty-three to academic year twenty-three, twenty-four, does that count towards the twenty hours, or does that not, is that not eligible to be counted towards the twenty hours?
So I, I would, I would compare his year of fellowship in, in Pennsylvania as, as like a student teaching type of an experience for being in school. When you're saying twenty months of successful service, that's in an approved non-public school currently.
Right, so that, that particular piece, the twenty-three to twenty-four year school year was not as an independent teacher. It was through a program, so that doesn't count towards twenty.
Correct.
Thank you. That's, that's all I wanted to know, because, right, that, that was my clarifying question, because assuming that the person was working under their, whatever they want to call a shortage area that in that state, in my mind, I'm thinking, well, next month he would have twenty months, why are we here? So that answers my question. Thank you very much.
And you're right, and that's a great question, because we do have internal processes through our regs as well as statute that allow us to allow for twenty months under the, the D S A, and we can build it that way without having to come here and say that that's a basic one just a little bit. All right, thank, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, can I have, uh, we're ready for it, but then, this is two, uh, on item seven D, the approval certification for Jevon Adote. Call in favor. I, I opposed. Same, process, congratulations, Jevon.
That's it, everyone.
Any other questions?
Okay, can I have, uh, we're ready for it, but then, this is two, uh, on item seven D, the approval certification for Jevon Adote. Call in favor. I, I opposed. Same, process, congratulations, Jevon.
That's it, everyone.
I'm sorry. I have a motion to.
Remove.
Thank you. We now have our second candidate, Tyler Felton.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon again. Um, Mr. Tyler Felton successfully completed an approved educator certification program in the state of Ohio, but is unable to obtain a certificate due to a state requirement that he must first accept a position teaching in Ohio to be even, uh, eligible for an institutional recommendation. He has met certification requirements in two states, one of which is covered our, under our enhanced reciprocity agreement. The Woodhouse Academy has confirmed multiple years of successful teaching service under long-term substitute and durational shortage area permit organizations, provided a fervent letter of support, and they wish to retain this educator. Mr. Felton is not lacking any professional education coursework, has verified content knowledge through multiple certification tests. Bureau of Certification did not identify any regulatory areas that haven't been met and strongly support issuing some educators certificate.
Questions?
All those in favor? I, I oppose. Always nice having you two. That's right. Thank you so much. Motion for seven A, the renewal of state charter New Beginnings Family Academy in Bridgeport. Yes, Dr. Jenkins.
Good afternoon. At the table we meet today is interim director, Collette Mace Thieros. The board chair, Dr. Don Foley, and the chief academic officer, Emma Thompson, from New Beginning Academy. Opening in nineteen ninety-nine, New Beginnings Family Academy has provided the Bridgeport community with twenty-five years of service. As a pre-K six institution serving four hundred thirty-five students, ninety-seven point two percent in Bridgeport. New Beginnings remains committed to its mission of providing meaningful, high-quality education with skill-based learning that helps develop essential social emotional. Since its three-year digital charter renewal in twenty twenty-two, New Beginnings Family Academy has operated under a comprehensive corrective action plan addressing academic performance and chronic absenteeism complaint. During the charter renewal process, New Beginnings Family Academy progress was evaluated across four standards. School performance, governance, school student population, and legal compliance after the implementation of its corrective actions during this renewal. While New Beginnings Family Academy has three strengths that surpass the whole district metrics of certain academic. Its overall next generation accountability index falls below the state and most districts averages. Um, priority areas for action will include academics, chronic absenteeism, including L M L recruitment, enhancing governance documentation, ensuring a full staffing pipeline. Based on this evaluation and the strong community support, the C S D E recommends a three-year charter renewal in July twenty twenty-five, between twenty twenty-eight, subject to specific conditions outlined in the executive summary, designed to continue to strengthen New Beginnings Family Academy's academic outcomes, operational effectiveness, and worldwide practices.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
Good afternoon, everyone. I've, literally Don Foley and I've had the privilege of serving as chair of New Beginnings Family Academy Board, Board Directors for the past eight years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today on behalf of M B F A's learning community. And to express our thanks for your consideration of our three-year charter renewal. Joining me today are two critical members of M B F A's leadership team. LeFerran has been a dedicated member of our leadership team for the past six years. Over the past month, LeFerran has stepped, stepped up into the role of interim director. Well, Renell Swagerty, many of you would have probably recognized, um, as the M B F A's all-standing director and inspirational leader, is on medical medias. LeFerran will share insights into M B F A's educational model and aims focused efforts and successes in addressing the problem at the table. Following her, you'll hear from Pam Dalton, M B F A's G academic officer, on progress.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of New Beginnings Family Academy or M B F A. We also want to express gratitude to Dr. Jenkins and her team for their continued collaboration and support. At New Beginnings Family Academy, we are deeply into our mission of providing high-quality education to our children through experience-based learning to foster their social, emotional, and critical thinking skills. Yes, we're adamant about addressing conditions for further, uh, for charter renewal outlined in the turnaround spot this report shows, particularly the need for academic improvement and increased, uh, reduction in our absenteeism rates. New Beginnings Family Academy's distinctive evidence-based emotional responsive model, or E R P, which prioritizes respectful student-adult relationships, supportive practices, strong family partnerships, and explicit social-emotional instruction positions us well to meet. family partnerships, and explicit social-emotional instruction positions us well to meet these challenges. We understand that trust, safety, and positive relationships are key to effective teaching and learning, and as such, um, we want to point out that in environments like New Beginnings Family Academy, where over eighty-nine percent of her students qualify for free or reduced priced meals, this is important. And I must say that many of those students have experienced significant trauma. MBFA's ERP model responds to this reality. Over the past ten years, we have seen consistent growth in our students' social-emotional competencies as measured by the DESA assessment through the Aberture platform, which can then be recently introduced to schools to, uh, in district statewide. While acknowledging the need for to improve MBFA's overall accountability index, it's important to note that MBFA outperformed the host district on every academic performance index indicator and exceeded the host district's performance in all but one academic group building. Additionally, MBFA outperformed the state average for highly needed students in ELA and SANS achievements, ELA growth, and progress toward English language proficiency. In pursuit of stronger academic outcomes, MBFA has fully implemented a C S D approved reading program. We've also established a partnership with Math For All and evidence-based professional learning initiatives that equips classroom teachers with inclusive equity-focused strategies to improve math instruction. In regards to our absenteeism, MBFA remains firmly committed to collaborating with families to improve attendance rates. Our leadership team participated in a C S D sponsored year-long professional development focused on attendance and consistently engaged in the C D S D Talk Tuesday session. These efforts added implementation of a very comprehensive, multi-tiered attendance framework, which contributed to an eight-point-five reduction of chronic absenteeism rate. Um, in pursuit of similar success, we're committing, we're committed to strengthening our attendance framework with the goal of reducing chronic absenteeism through implementation of the C S D new school climate policy along other evidence-based strategies. That said, we are concerned about the recent vote by the host district board of education to expand the mileage requirement or to cancel trans- transportation services for many students. As transportation remains one of the most frequent cited barriers to regular attendance by MBFA families, this decision will likely have negative impact on MBFA's students' attendance. In participation of this, we are, in anticipation, I should say, of this, we are proactively looking to see what other evidence-based strategies we can implement, uh, among the schools who may so-called be impacted directly by that decision. In closing, I want to highlight that New Beginnings Family Academy, although this climate and cul- cul-de-sac climate remains strong, from MBFA, um, since twenty-twenty-one, MBFA's suspension rate has remained below that of the whole district and the state. This achievement is directly tied to our ERP model, which allows to provide supports and resources that keeps students, especially those with challenging behaviors, engaged in learning and out of the exclusionary discipline. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. Now I'll turn it back over to
Questions?
Thank you for coming before us. Um, I know we'll be seeing what accountability, um, next full year, I believe. The growth is continues to grow, and, um, obviously, as you know, from past times being accountability, we're really concerned with the chronic absenteeism and hope that we see some progress. But thank you.
Thank you. You ready to go? When you will just say, all in favor of renewal of state charter for New Beginnings Family Academy, a Bridgeport, all in favor? Opposed? Stained? Motion passed this. Thank you. A motion for renewal of state charter at the Bridge Academy. Second.
At the table today is Tyrone Elliott, the school superintendent, and he also serves in the capacity of principal, and board chair, Dr. James Ollie. The Bridge Academy has served the Bridgeport community for twenty-seven years, since opening in nineteen ninety-seven, fulfilling its mission to create a small, caring public charter schools in a rigorous learning environment, where communication and consistent effort support personal and academic learning. Currently serving grades seventy-twelve with two hundred and eighty-one students, ninety-eight percent from Bridgeport, the bridge provides vital educational opportunity for a population where eighty-five point four percent qualifies for free and reduced-priced meals, seventeen point four percent receive special education. Following its three-year conditional charter renewal in twenty-twenty-two, the bridge has implemented a corrective action plan focused on improving academic achievement. The school's twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four next generation accountability index now surpasses both the state and host district averages, with particular strength in graduation rates, post-secondary entrance, and new enrollment participation. While mathematics rules shows promise, performance gap in core academic subjects and chronic absenteeism remain areas for improvement, along with financial sustainability concerns and underrepresentation of multilingual learners versus the district. Based on the bridge's overall performance and strong community support, during the public hearing, family members lack community and need to prepare for community. So strong community support. The C S D E recommends a four-year charter renewal from July twenty-twenty-five through twenty twenty-twenty-nine, subject to the conditions outlined when we reflect this.
That's been a million. Um, I had the privilege of serving as superintendent of Bridge Academy for the past five years. I just want to say thank you to Jenkins, which thanks me, and charter school turnaround office, and our ongoing collaboration and support. Uh, at Bridge Academy, we are proud of the progress we made across New Beginnings Family Academy, seeing both in best back ELA math, overall increases in our SAT scores in the last three years, as well as, uh, increased graduation rates. Um, we've also seen the improvements of our college and career already set in the, um, index. One of the cornerstone of our academic success at the high school has been the new enrollment program, given our students, uh, a rigorous college-level coursework, while still in high school. It's an initiative, kind of challenge and inspire our students, but also saves families hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, throughout their lives, um, in college tuition, as well as a meaningful end start. So many of our students are graduating, uh, these substitutes who are early college, um, so that cuts down the period in Austin College and Southern Conference. That said, we acknowledge that still have a lot of work to be done. Uh, our academic performance has improved. Um, we're not hitting the state average. Best back for absentee. Uh, but we also recognize our challenge in chronic absenteeism, already starting to respond, uh, for our academic challenges as well as our absenteeism. Uh, we we shall to other schools in the area who seem to excite with them. Better than that when it comes to the, uh, chronic absenteeism, so we can see what our best practices, but also strengthen our curriculum, uh, for high school, as well as, uh, so how we can, uh, more targeted interventions to sell, uh, inside the classroom as well as intervention. We also do recognize our unique challenge at the end of this board, and both of the public schools, uh, financial situation, um, you know, also to expand transportation walking distance, it's going to affect our school. So we're trying to come up with solutions before it actually happens this summer. So we, this summer, the board and I will look at our policies and hopefully have going on and review and advise, uh, what is necessary to meet the challenge. Uh, we're also eager to partner with the charter school turnaround office, uh, as well as a thoughtful, fear-driven, continuous improvement to support our students reflect our commitment to that way.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you for, uh, as board chair and member of the board for about a couple of years. Although I don't have a educated background, I do bring the deep, um, level of experience around business. And so, uh, as a, as board chair, I've been focusing on how do we improve our development and practices as we collaborate with school administration. So we're really focused on that. We are looking at, um, ways to enhance our ability to provide support to the administration, uh, as well as embarking on developing our, our plan, our strategic plan to partner with school administrations. I I would also like to say that as we think about fiscal sustainability, that really for me says, well, how do we become more innovative in a climate where money has been sort of pulled back, right? The end of asset funds, the change in administration at a credible level. What can we do more innovatively, if you will, to sort of provide support as we partner again with the school? So looking forward to the opportunity and very appreciative of the bridge.
Questions, comments? About, um, the consideration of, uh, the renewal of the state charter at the Bridge Academy, Bridgeport, all in favor? I am opposed. Process. Red light and spin. As a motion for seven C, the consideration of capital petition for declaratory rule.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, sitting with me today in, um, Cisco, looking to the attorney, uh, in the division of, uh, he's a one government of affairs. You know, purple people like to say that attorneys get paid by the word, like, we're going to surprise them today and provide the succinctest possible. Um, and essentially, what we have here is a petition for declaratory ruling. The statute specifically four dash one seventy-six provides that an agency, the state board, and issued declaratory rulings upon, upon a petition that has been submitted to us. Uh, back to the appointment, specify circumstances of provision of the general statutes. Uh, some members of the board, uh, will recall back in two thousand twenty-four, uh, the board issued declaratory rulings in a manner that was brought by, uh, a couple of charter schools, Brass City and Hope City, which I noted at the last, at last month's meeting, a court recently affirmed that declaratory ruling. So here we are today with, as noted, another petition for declaratory ruling. And as, uh, Lou set forth in his report, a very detailed explanation of the factual context for this petition, and also delegated certain actions that the board would take. This, uh, potentially addresses, there are eight separate issues upon which the city is requesting declaratory ruling. Uh, they are somewhat inadvertently intertwined with one another. I don't mean to be reductive, but essentially what they come down to is the, what is the proper funding mechanism under state statute for charter school? As the board is aware, in, uh, applicants come before the board, the board determines whether or not to issue a initial cert- certificate of approval. Then, uh, through ten dash sixty-six B B, go to the general assembly. The general assembly, uh, determines funding for charter school. The petition, as I said, seeks to determine, uh, what is the proper application of those statutes to this funding process. Again, that is the crux of this. I I don't mean to, to, uh, you know, to minimize the different issues that have been seek upon which are seeking sort of ruling petitioners, but nonetheless, that's essentially what it comes down to. Uh, we believe that this is a important issue, one that's capable of repetition. Sure. So the board had a couple of options. Board could say, well, we don't think there needs to be declaratory ruling, and, uh, could say that, right, or we can initiate regulation-making procedures. The other option is that the board can choose to issue declaratory ruling. And again, given the importance of this issue, given the fact that it's something that is not necessarily women in particular case, but again, could arise again a seizure from other, uh, applicants for charter status, uh, and bar recommended that board, uh, decide to issue declaratory ruling. And to make it clear, we heard in all the comment, uh, individuals who have here on behalf of this petition, and this is really a two-step process. The board decides to go for at least declaration, you're not deciding the substantive now. Essentially, what the board is voting on today is whether or not to approve their ruling, uh, ruling process. Here's the process to it. Uh, and wants that process to move. And, uh, the board has six months from when this is filed, which is part of eighteen for this year. If you do not issue a declaratory ruling within six months, then essentially goes to court, where the petition can go to court. And quite frankly, uh, they can go to court after the board issued this declaratory rulings. But at this point, we're just recommending to the board that it authorize State Department of Education to, uh, issue a declar- or to do, engage in the process that will lead to, uh, a substantive declaratory ruling by the board. So again, you're not, and today we're not devoting on the ultimate outcome, the ultimate issue, rather, you just be simply saying, yeah, we think it's declaratory ruling appropriate, and, uh, direct State Department of Education to follow, implement, follow the, the further procedures, uh, which will result, that, that will be examined at some point over the next few months, uh, through notification as to such declaratory ruling. Any questions?
So maybe, I may be the only one at the table that, no, 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 this is the complicated matter. Yeah, really doesn't understand just declaratory ruling. In essence, what would we be voting on? Is it to authorize further investigation? So just declaratory ruling, simple as possible for most of us that don't have this background?
No, totally understand that. Yeah, declaratory ruling, essentially, is agency saying, we are declaring that this is the appropriate application of statute or regulation or whatnot. This case, again, the funding, uh, process, then forth in ten dash sixty-six B B, ten dash sixty-six E E of the committee of general statutes. ten dash sixty six EE of the Connecticut general statutes. Now, or it can't simply say, without going through a process of allowing interested parties to rejoin the process to submit briefs, to submit motions, that sort of thing. They can't reach a decision. They need to have this process by which information is gathered, analysis is made, and conclusions are reached on which the board will vote. And whether or not, by doing so, the board will, at that point, not today, I guess, but at that point, the board will be declaring, we think X, we think Y. It'll really come down to what the board believes that the proper application of statute.
Can I comment briefly?
Obviously.
What you'll be doing, what the board will be doing, there are actually eight different rulings, but there's two that are basic, really good off things. What the board will be deciding is whether the State Board of Education is required to rank charter school applicants or approved in order to determine which one will be funded first. That's the story question. And second, whether the ranking is then binding on the State Board of Education in or the State Department of Education in the approval issues of charters and funding of charter schools. Again, the applicants spread out into all eight different questions. Those are the essential issues and the board will be deciding under the statute, what's the answer to those two questions.
And for today, for today, we're deciding whether we move to answer those two questions.
Yeah, you can answer them today.
So that it's clear, we are, we are voting whether or not we move to that. We're not voting on those eight.
Exactly.
And where do we find those eight items? We're running through the.
It'll be a process, one of the things in the, I mean, in the, in the resolution today, you're setting a process whereby the Department of Education will address with the applicants a process for providing information, a timeline for providing briefs, others, documents, which will enable us to give you a recommendation as to how you may want to answer these questions. That will come to you before the, when we even make.
If we vote in favor of the declaratory ruling, we will get that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's correct.
I guess. So it sounds to me a long time. This is, this is a part of the process. Thank you.
You're, you're, the board is basically deciding today whether to authorize partnership of this case and walk in progress. Whether you're going to say, hey, nothing to see here, we're not, you know, no, we don't think there needs to be a declaratory ruling. Our recommendation is that the board do authorize us to proceed with this petition.
And will it be concluded by the interest of all the parties involved?
Well, the wheel of justice drives slowly, but as noted before, under the statute, we, it's ten dash, excuse me, four dash one seventy six, we have six months from the initial March eighteenth submission of the board to come to a substantive determination with respect to this declaration. Now, that can be, you know, that can be amended, parties can, we are going to, if the board does stop their recommendation, there will be a scheduling conference that the Division of Legal and Governmental Affairs the parties, just try to get a timeline scheduling order, when it's a brief, that kind of thing. But in any event, if we come back for the board at the day, Gary.
Question, Mike. If the board does vote, again, I got it. So if the board does vote in favor of this bargaining process for declaratory ruling, what further points of engagement do you anticipate for the board at that process?
Typically not until we come back. Who and I think we back again for the board and we have worked before with a proposed declaratory ruling. New recommendation add to that, add to those ruling. And it's, and we'll know that there are eight separate issues upon which to be issued declaratory rulings. And, and at that point, the board is deliberate to determine whether or not to allow the board declaratory ruling and make some differences. Now, you really will use the board members would not be engaged till that time. In the fact that you're the arbiter, you're the arbiter of this declaratory ruling, it's appropriate that you not engage in the process.
Right, so we should expect to see sort of a suggestion for what that rule should be coming back within, you know, maybe the six-month timeline that you're anticipating.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And again, for those who are here for the prior declaratory ruling, that's the process we follow. So that we would, you would have the opportunity to review the report, if you oppose, if you aren't amended, propose to find declaratory rulings, and then determine whether or not you're agreement or not.
So the vote is, I am second C, the consideration of approving the application of declaratory ruling. All in favor? Oppose? Standing? Who cares?
Thank you very much.
We have financial. And we are down to committee reports. Academic and standards assessment, that meeting will take place on May twentieth. And I, I do want to draw the attention from all board members because this is a committee that we lost our chair earlier, we've now lost a couple of members of this committee. So if you can attend, it would be very kind official to see if it's something you would like to continue doing, the academic and standards. Nine thirty. I'm going to see, we'll be reviewing, looking back at what this, this committee, first of all, is one of the really solid ones out of the Florida, because they do look at a lot of districts in their curriculum and what is approved. And we go into the readings of this committee for our, to the whole board. So if you'll be looking back on the accomplishments of this past year, also be looking forward about the third of the work on for next year. So it's a good meeting for you to see the scope of what the committee does. So if you can attend, I would appreciate that you could do so. Accountability and support. This meeting is on May fifteenth at three thirty. And we did, we had, we held our accountability and support meeting a couple of weeks ago where we reviewed some more charters and so forth. The one coming up, I believe, I don't remember now, but there's quite a few that we're reviewing. All right, we're going to be reviewing the Commissioner Network schools, where there's four of them, four of them. And, and then looking at two charters, so it's. Bad work. We're not sure, and I know, Doctor, I don't see, I'm not, we're still unsure about the June, correct? We'll discuss that because I know there was, when we talked at our last accountability, there's a question whether anybody will actually be here for the June meeting. So I guess we'll wait on that, we'll, we'll have a determination on our main meeting. So that's accountability and support. Mr. Harris, finance.
My thanks goes out, Madam Commissioner. And the new hire. But the Finance Audit and Budget Committee will meet next on June third. Just a reminder, we do meet quarterly. The department is very busy. Going through or keeping the committed update on their work to include new requested audits. And as, as our commissioner also stated, that third phase of the Hartford schools. They are doing a deep dive in the finances of the Hartford school system. So next meeting is June third.
Let's finish on policy.
Thank you. Our last meeting was held after our, our State Board of Education meeting. Many thanks go to Ajit for coming in and explaining all of the things that go into creating the, the annual condition of education in Connecticut report. We really appreciate him helping us understand all of the data that goes into that, that process. We do not have a meeting this month, but we will look forward to having, I anticipate a meeting in June.
And unfortunately, we still do not have a, a report from Connecticut Technical Education. I know some board members have asked about that. We have not seen one, I haven't seen one sit in the seat. Do we have any updates? I, I have heard that they hired a superintendent. Is that true?
Yes.
Perhaps now then maybe there's a superintendent, maybe we'll, because I know Kelly Valaris also sits on that board and we really have gotten absolutely no updates at all. And it's important that we receive that.
We will follow.
Yeah, so, and so there has been a superintendent, hasn't it?
I believe, I believe he had been the first one sitting in my school, but he was three days fired.
That's what hopefully gets home. This is a report, a very beneficial for us to hear. Now, it's the next member engagement is June second, Monday, we're comp. And then the CERC report, you have it, as you always do, you know, all the great work that CERC does. I know I'm going to see a few of you at the upcoming Just National System Racism Conference on Friday. I know a few of you are attending, but what I want to draw your attention to because is the letter that I also included in there that was sent from the Executive Director, Dr. Kennedy, to the governor. And if you, I mean, what sums it up and really why I want you to really read is the beginning of the second paragraph. I am reaching out to express my deep concern about the future of CERC. And so I'd like you to really read that and, and understand that there is a deep concern. We're extremely looking, CERC board has, we've had many meetings over this, and so I want you all to be aware of it as well because it is such a essential piece to us. And I do want you to understand what's going on there. And that I will take a motion.
Sorry, sorry.
One thing, I don't want to keep you, but Laura, I'm not, I wanted to do an update to you for you today on legislative what's happening in the legislature, but we'll do that next month. Only to say, how many bills are you tracking, Laura?
Oh, oh, well, I'm tracking probably a hundred bills, but they're, they're not all going to end up over the finish line. We've, just very quickly, we reviewed bills in seventeen committees and provided testimony on thirty six different bills in eleven different committees. And education alone, thirty two pages.
So it is an education year, lots happening, and we'll make sure we keep it posted as to what is occurring.
Yeah.
Okay. Follow-up question about that. I read your, written, submitted public testimony to the Special Committee on Special Education. Has there been any follow-up with your request to sit down and have conversations about?
Yes. So we're, I mean, that's really where we are now with a lot of all of this is mainly separately with legislators. Specifically address issues of concerns that are in bills. So that's, that's.
Educate.
Educate, yes. So I, I will thank the team because they've been very busy as we, as it's, the conversation, yes, that is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Something else. Your turn. All in favor? I know.